Morning. Sorry for the delay. Just a reminder, this is the meeting for Tuesday, June 27th, 25th, 2019. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off and if you have conversations, please take them outside of the room. In conformance of the open meeting law, I am informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you are here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, please put your name and address on the record and this is your chance to give us new information. So if somebody has already mentioned what your concern is, please put your name and address on the record and leave the time open for somebody else to give us new information. This is also a reminder that we do not have a full board. This is because of the fact that we have one alternate who couldn't make it today and that's it. We have no other alternates. So this makes it imperative that we have alternates in place so that we can proceed with meetings. So now, given this fact, if any applicant here today can request a deferral to a later date, for your project to pass today, you need to have five of us on board. Yes, you need to have five people voting in support of your project. And so actually, you need all six of us in support of your project because you need... So you need to be fairly comfortable with your proposal and your process. So just to put that on the record. With that information out there, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of June 11th, 2019. We need to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
First call for extension, calling BOA 648-704, 1857 to 1859 Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury.
So tell us what this extension is based on?
This extension is based on simply needing more time in order to pull the permit. The proposal is for 20 residential units with two commercial first-floor units and due to project priorities with other projects, my client, Stephen Connolly from Connolly Construction, is working on, this one did get pushed back. I can tell this board-
Is the permit still valid?
Yes, it is.
Is our appeal still valid?
Yes, oh, Madam Chair.
It's within the two years.
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for an extension for one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, the board final arbiter, calling BOA 651-938-49HAMILTONSTREET. Companion case, BOA 651-909-51HAMILTONSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Board. Vargas Dusselvera.
Why are you here?
Hi, I'm here to... This project was before you some time ago. The building has already been erected. I had a small change. I took three bedrooms from one from each floor and then added two bedrooms into the basement. We also did a little bump out. That's just basically for aesthetic, to make the building look really nice from the outside.
So this is already constructed?
Yes, ma'am.
And this... So the bedroom count remains the same?
Yes.
It's just the... And which project is this? So 4951 is a two-family?
No, they're both three-family, one in the front and one in the rear.
Okay.
So we actually subtracted three bedrooms and added just two. So it's one less bedroom.
And in the basement, everything is according to code?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the bump out, what's the effect of the bump out? Does it increase the yard violation in any way?
There is no violation at all. This is just for the final arbiter, but there is no violation on anything that we did.
And did this come through BPDA design review or how did this happen?
Yes, the BPDA has already reviewed it and already has stamped it.
Okay. Mr. Olick?
Yeah, well, we approved this for the set of plans that I have in front of me. Is the change reflected?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, okay.
Okay, maybe, because I'm looking at the prints with-
So, do you want me to look at that? Because, I mean, I submitted the most recent plans to ISD.
When?
When I applied for the amendment.
When?
Two months ago, maybe? I don't remember the exact date.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just, I want to make sure that what you're talking about is... was approved because we already approved this for the BPDA design review.
Okay, in the meantime, anybody here who's asking for deferral or withdrawal?
Next to you.
Please come up. Yeah, your address?
Thank you, Madam Chair. 64 Nelson Street, BOA 905-438.
Hold on a second. So what are we going to do? For the record, calling BOA 905-438, 64 Nelson Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury and I'm representing my client, Stephen Connolly from Connolly Construction and Management, a developer. We did... I'm asking for the deferral because we met with the neighborhood association and had a butters meeting back in March. Last Thursday, I was notified by Ms. Celestine from the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, that that local neighborhood organization would like to have further discussions on this matter. So in deference to continuing to talk to them on this matter, I'd be asking the board for a deferral.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
August 27th.
Okay, August 27th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are we back to this case or are we going to call it deferral? Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing night, we'll go back to this case.
Mr. Olick, are the plans satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the first case for 9:30, calling BOA 897-293-32BLAINESTREET. This is a change of auction from a single-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, also to erect a two-story addition and side addition. The violation of Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 51, Section 8, the four-unit dwelling is a forbidden use. Article 51, Section 9, the lot area for additional units is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the height requirement is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article 51, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 23, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Josh Federman, one of the principals of City Realty, the owners of 32 Blaine.
Can you speak up? Some people in the back are having difficulty hearing you.
My apologies, Madam Chair. I also have some packets for you folks as well. Mind if I bring them up? Is that okay?
Josh, can you bring them up, please? Why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Thank you. Again, as was mentioned, we're proposing to change the occupancy from an existing one-family dwelling to make it a three-family dwelling and adding a one-story inside addition as part of the proposal. This particular sub-district is a 3F, 4,000, under the code and this particular lot size is 2,500 square feet. The gross square footage of this proposed building would be 2,959 square feet. The proposed unit breakdown would be Unit 1 being a two-bed, 912-square-foot unit. Unit 2, a two-bed, 734-square-foot unit. And finally, Unit 3, a one-bed, 665-square-foot unit. Just to briefly go over the violations.
So we have it advertised as a change occupancy from a 1 to a 4?
Correct.
So it's been reduced to a 3? Have the violations changed in any way?
They've come down a bit, so I can briefly-
But they're all still standing?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So just to go over those violations, as I mentioned, part of that reduction was working with the community and we were happy to get the support of the BAIA and the ACA as part of that process. But lot area for each additional dwelling unit, 2,000, will be required, so we do not need that 2,000 requirement. FAR .6 is allowed, we're at 1.18. Usable open space per dwelling unit, 650 additional will be required. Front and rear yard, a front yard is a pre-existing violation as well as rear yard, 20 and 30 would be required. And parking, although we do have two existing spots plus room for one tandem, we still trigger a violation because three legal spots would be required.
Okay.
At this time, I can pause to answer any other additional question.
Tell us about the stories and height.
So the height of the building, three, is what's allowed. We're at three stories and we're below the height requirement of 35. We're at 34 feet, four inches.
And so this is... There's going to be living space... Unit 1 is going to have space in the basement?
Correct, correct. It would have... It would be a duplex unit, so in the lower level, it would have a kitchen and dining area and in the upper level, there would be two bed and one bath.
And where is the main entrance to that unit? Is that through the side yard?
The main entrance would be from the first floor, up the primary stairs, and then there's a secondary direct exit on the side yard from the mechanical. So the primary entrance would be through the front door.
Okay. Okay, let's just look at the plans. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The ground's adequate. The basement elevation is all right and we've got common access to the utility.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I would like to speak.
Hold on, hold on. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this project. We conducted two butters meetings, the first, January 22nd, and the second butters meeting was May 6th. One of the primary concerns was the plot lines are a bit messy down in that area, so we had asked that the applicant work with direct butters to ensure that they would not be denying residents' access to their driveways. Other issues, there were concerns about the height. They reduced it down from four units to three. They met with both civic groups, the Alston Civic Association and the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, and changed their plans to ensure that there was not living bedrooms down in the basement. That was a primary concern of the civics, so we feel that after they've made these concessions, they've continued to work with the community and they've promised that they would not be denying residents' access to their driveway, we're on record in support.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco on behalf of Counselor Mark Seo, I would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro representing the Alston Civic Association, we'd like to go on record of support with the proviso that the units not be rented to undergraduate students and that there be appropriate screening and buffering of the site.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record and tell us briefly what your opposition is based on.
Eleonore Nefidova live on 30 Blaine Street, right next to 32 Blaine Street. I'm speaking to oppose it because if they build the addition on a side, which will be much closer to my house, it will, apart from blocking more light, it will get even like the house of my value would be... The value of my house would be lower because it would feel jammed. There would be less access to the backyard and I just want them to work with the neighbors because there was a space behind their house that they could talk with the other neighbors that even though the plot line is missed, but the neighbor is willing to deed them, they're part of the land that is right behind their house that legally doesn't belong to them, but it's like a wasted land. The neighbor who owns that land willing to give it to them if they work with her, if they like, you know, start their own survey, just pay like $2,500 and work with her, she doesn't want to pay taxes on something she's not intended to use.
Okay, so your opposition is based on the impact on your house?
Impact on my house, yes, and also like even though like it would be three-family houses, the parking, they will have three parking, but, you know, in two-bedroom units, there would be at least two people probably normally, so this is one of the-
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record and give us new information, please.
My name is David Smith at, living at 24 Blaine Street in Alston, on this street. I'd like to express my opposition because I've been requested to come here by my neighbors.
So please just bullet point what your opposition is based on. As you can see, there's a full room here, so please bullet point your concerns.
The question of density and parking. Gentrification of the neighborhood.
Density, parking, and gentrification. Okay, thank you.
My African-American neighbor, who is elderly, has just announced to me she is leaving because of a crippling rent increase, which the landlord immediately after the announcement of this project. There is a human cost to the building which is going on in Brighton right now and what is needed is a grassroots, community-oriented to protest the amount of overbuilding which is going on in Brighton. I understand it is the policy of the city of Boston to build everything that it can, but the congestion, the daily road rage, which we see because of the traffic jams which are happening in our tiny little corner of the world, North Alston, are exacerbated-
I know North... Actually, know North Alston very well.
...by every single project.
Thank you, thank you.
This particular project, going from one family, first to four-family, then to three-family, is an example of the greed of developers at the cost of low-income residents.
Listen, thank you very much. Heard your opposition. Okay, can you respond about the plot plan?
Yep, so the... This street, there seems to be some overlapping property lines and we've met with our neighbor at 30 Blaine and have let her know and the mayor's office that we'll continue to meet with her if we have to down the line redraw the lot lines to match what's there. We've committed to doing that and secondarily, we... There's a sort of an existing fence line that we kept the project within so that it wouldn't interfere with what she's using. So we've been trying to be very cognizant of that and we also met with our rear neighbor to talk about the lot lines there and just we committed to vote to continue working with them.
Okay, and should things mature with your neighbor at 30? How much lot area will you be adding to the property and will it trigger her property into some level of violation?
No, I think we'd be giving her-
Oh, you'd be giving her lot?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So given the... Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I have another question.
Yes?
The proviso said Mr. Disidoro discussed, is that something that you are open to?
Yes, yes.
Do we agree to?
No.
And I think the only thing we can do is put the proviso in for screening and buffering. Go ahead, quick.
My question was on the proviso, are we able to put that proviso in that undergrad students are...
No.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review with particular attention to screening and buffering.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 931-868-25HENSHAUSTREET. This is a change of auction from a three-family to a four-family dwelling. No work is required. The violation is Article 51, Section 8. Multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the location of the main entrance shall face the front lot line. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Timothy Burke. My business address is 142 Berkeley Street. I'm the architect for the project and with me is the owner of the building, Mr. Jack Cunningham.
Jack Cunningham, 55, Jefferson Avenue, Brighton.
Tell us what's proposed here.
This is an existing building. There's no construction work required for this presentation, but it was originally built as two single-family houses that have an eight-inch brick wall between them on one lot and the assessors look at it as 11 Minlo Street and ISD looks at it as 25 Henshaw Street. The 25 Henshaw property became a three-family in 1961 with the board approval and in 1963, a medical professional office was put on the first floor. What we're looking to do is to remove that medical professional office use and restore the residential use, so there would be four units total in the building. One two-bedroom at 800 square feet, one five-bedroom at 1,627 square feet, one two-
One five-bedroom?
Four-bedroom.
It's four, really. It's a very small extra room.
The applicant just needs to know that only four unrelated individuals can live in a unit?
So, yeah, it's a four-bedroom, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep. One two-bedroom at 821 square feet and one four-bedroom at 1,815 square feet. We met with the butters who were in support as well as the BAIA meeting in the community. The neighborhood liked the fact that the office use wasn't there because of the less traffic and the owner has been running, operating this, you know, owning this property for quite a while. He takes very good care of it.
So tell us how this is... Tell us about the four bedrooms. I'm looking at A1, is that... Will that show me the...
Yes, it's on unit... On A2, it's labeled Unit Number 2.
Okay.
And it's on the second and third floors of that house.
Okay.
Which ones that you don't use as a counter? This one? This one? Second floor?
So if I'm looking at the second floor plan, it looks like it's one bedroom and then there's three bedrooms on the top floor?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are fine. Is there any... There's no site plan, is any off-street parking or...
The house pretty much fills the lot. There's no room for parking.
But in Ammer Street?
Yeah, there's street parking in the neighborhood, yes.
Is any... Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. As the applicant mentioned, conducted a butters meeting on April 3rd. No serious concerns were raised by neighbors and as I mentioned, the applicant takes good care of the property, was actually working with one of the constituents on an issue with the tree branch and they trimmed it back. They also went on to the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, received full support, so we're in favor of this proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Daniel Polanco on behalf of Counselor Mark Seo, I would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just to clarify, so this property owner has been paying taxes on this as a four-family?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 927-234-61 to 67 Brighton Avenue. This is the legalized living space in the basement of 61 and 67 Brighton Avenue in Alston, which is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. No work to be done. Combine four buildings into one to be known as 61-67 Brighton Avenue. Violation of Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. And Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Paul Ruffo, Smith, Doug &amp; Bula and Ruffo, 101 Federal Street in Boston. With me is my colleague, Sam Zuckerneck. Also with us is representative of the owner, Mount Vernon Company, Eric Sheenock. If I might, the... This came up out of routine inspection by Inspection Services that the... In two of the units, this is basically a four doorway building built in the 1920s. In two of the units, there was living space there when we bought the building, when Mount Vernon bought the building in the early 1990s. ISD couldn't find a record of the living space having been approved, so they issued a violation. In talking with their counsel, Mr. Coburn, we determined that as we had received, we need to ask for zoning relief. As part of that, we also, and as part of the application with ISD, we hired Hastings Consulting, which is a building code consultant, just to make sure that the space itself could be appropriate living space and he determined that, this is Mr. Kevin Hastings, P-E-L-E-D, he determined that the space could be rendered habitable as long as that space was sprinkled, which we're going to do. He also determined that the means of... He also determined that the means of egress, the two means of egress were appropriate. As I say, that was part of-
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in that space?
Roughly seven feet.
It varies. There's a, there's an area that's below seven that we would increase the ceiling height. There's room in the floors to do so.
Okay. And how, what's the, what are the sizes of each unit?
They're both three-bedroom apartments.
Three-bedroom, how many square feet?
And I'm sorry, just to clarify. So, they're first-floor units, and these are the, these are the, part of the units in the basement. So, we're not adding additional units. They're duplexed units already.
So, what would be the size of that unit?
Right. First, 771 looks like one of them, and the other one is 653.
Okay. And these are three bedrooms at these sizes?
No.
I think you mean probably 1,000.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not sure in the math. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. In the meantime, can we have the letter from your co-consultant for the file?
Sure.
I also have letters of support from the, from the community.
Yeah. Okay. So, extension of a non-conforming use. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, I, drawings are existing conditions. They're adequate. You had said, can you say again, in your response to the chair's question about ceiling height, because it doesn't show on the print?
Yeah, there's one portion where bedrooms built up on sleepers, so there's room to add several inches of ceiling height when we redo the floors there. That's the area that's below seven feet.
So, it's on sleepers now, you're going to remove the sleepers?
Right. We have the room to go down.
But the underlying floor is-
Some floor is at a lower level.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I, I have the square footage, I'm sorry, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Looks like 821 for number 61, and then 11, 1279, I guess, for the other one. So, it's a combined first floor.
Good.
Second floor.
Thank you.
And we had, I'm sorry.
So, you're here to speak in support?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling in with the mayor's office and neighborhood services, would like to go on record in support. We're conducting the butters meeting on April 3rd. No concerns were raised by the residents. They went on to the Civic Association as well. No concerns were raised. We're pleased that there's going to be safety improvements for this basement living space, but, you know, we need as many units as possible in Austin, so we are in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Cielmo, would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We went on record in support with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Bennett from the Carpe Trisini. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I would like to make two motions. One, given the issue of the sprinklers and the ceiling height, that there be no building code relief. And then a separate motion for approval.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with the proviso.
Calling BOA 939-076-900 BEACON STREET. This is a change of auction from 32 apartments, two retail stores, underground parking and restaurant, to 32 apartments, one retail store, underground parking and restaurant, and a bubble tea shop café with takeout. This is to perform interior tenant improvement with the existing vanilla box on ground level for bubble tea shop café with takeout. The violation is Article 61, Section 10. Takeout restaurant is forbidden use. Eighty percent of the business is proposed to be, proposed to be takeout. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Cameron Merrill from Merrill &amp; McGarry, 100 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. The application before you is due to a violation based upon the intended use of this unit as a bubble tea location, in that eighty percent of their food, as it will be prepared, will be packaged for takeout. This is the existing 900 Beacon Street location. Currently, Café Landour is the center commercial restaurant. There are two wing vacant commercial units in this space right now. We intend to occupy the right of those spaces when you look at it. This space is particularly suited-
So, let me ask you. Has, has your client, is your client familiar with the takeout restaurant provisos that we usually have? And has he had experience with takeout?
Yes. So, the applicants were actually northeastern students, graduate students. This located, this type of store was their graduate project.
I just, so do they have experience with takeout?
Yes.
In the city of Boston, had they replied with takeout?
There are two letters up there from the previous landlords. I only had one copy of each letter, but congratulating on their success and commenting on those locations, where they've had good success as takeout locations.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are diminished, but they're adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Shanice Pimental with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. My predecessor, DeZel Guerrero, conducted a community process. Residents came out and were satisfied with the proposal. I'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Welcome. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we do have, sorry, two letters. One from the 905 Beacon Street Condo Trust in support, and 900 Beacon Street Realty Trust in support as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Hold on. This is for takeout, and the BPDA proposes the usual takeout language, so may we have that included, please?
The ACNA did ask that no deliveries be conducted from in front of Beacon Street, and we agreed to that condition.
So, in addition to the takeout provisos, no deliveries from Beacon Street?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, so that's whoever made the motion?
I made the motion, and then I support those amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 940-453-3850, Washington Street. This is a demolished and existing structure erect a four-story building with six residential units and six garage parking spaces. The violation is Article 33, Section 16, air right forbidden from not permitted within a transit corridor. Article 33, Section 16, this is an air right applicability and sufficient open space exclusive for parking, loading, fifty percent of the lot. Article 33, Section 16, air right applicability, subject subject to the Bosconcom approval. Article 55, Section 55-40, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 41, the conformity with the existing billing alignment in the block. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Shane Losi from Chu, the architects on the project, and Tom Falcucci, who's the owner and developer of 3850 Washington Street. As was mentioned, the proposed development is to demolish an existing uninhabited building, one family, and to erect a four-story building with six residential condominium units and six parking spaces in the back. The total lot size is 3,050, and the gross square footage of the building is 6,297 square feet. These units are all proposed to be one-bedroom and roughly 700 square feet in size. The first floor-
Sorry, what, how many square feet?
I'm sorry, roughly 700 square feet per unit. So, one unit is 660, and they average about 700. This particular area, as you can see in the last page in the packet of information, is mixed. There is some residential. There's a lot of commercial in that particular area. We did have a butter meetings, and were able to get support from our director butters, which I had submitted to the board as well. As was mentioned, these would all be condominium units on-site with deeded parking spaces to go along with each unit.
So, is this demolition and construction?
It would be, yes. So, demolishing the uninhabited. The building has sat idle for about two or three years.
I know the building, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. And where is the parking going to be?
So, there's a garage door on the front of the building. The interior would house two spaces inside, and in the rear, there would cantilever in the back, and there'd be four rear spaces.
There's nothing proposed by the rail, no parking really in the rear.
Can you tell them to move away from the door?
Correct.
You're from Arthur Chu. Can you please make sure that any proposals that come to us with a garage door at the street, because we've said this a few times in East Boston, South Boston, everywhere, that it's not going to be one of those blank garage doors? Okay? Thank you. So, let's, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
For the drawings, I do have a question. There's four, you're showing four parking spaces on the rear of the building, in the back, and then two underneath. There's a whole part of the first-floor basement there in the rear that is open. What is the use there? Why aren't there more parking spaces?
I'm sorry, where are you? In the rear?
I'm looking at A11, first-floor plan. And you go in, and there's two parking spaces there just past the elevator.
Correct.
And then what's, what's in the rear?
There's driveways. There's a space between the spots. If you look at the site plan on the left, there's four spots.
In the back. So, to get passageway through-
To the driveway on the left. You pass the two spots, and then there's a driveway between the two spots and the four spots in the rear.
Some maneuverability.
All right. Drawings are adequate.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Joe Carpenter from the mayor's office and neighborhood services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. They've completed the community process. They've received letters of support from their butters, and since our butters meeting until today, we have not received any, any additional questions from neighbors, so again, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to also go on record in support of this project with recommended BPDA design review.
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Samantha Bennett from Councilor Michael Flaherty's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 923-557-1667 to 1671 Blue Hill Avenue. This is a change, existing tri-vision billboard to a digital billboard. The violation is Article 60, Section 39. Digital billboard is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Joel Embady, 1571 Blue Avenue.
Can you speak up? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Joel Embady, 1671 Blue Hill Avenue. What I'm trying to do is replace an old billboard that's, you know, antiquated, and replace it with a digital billboard. Feeling is that, you know, it'll have much more public benefit because I'll be able to change it easier. It's much more versatile. Also, I've agreed to have community service announcements, you know, which will be geared towards the local community.
Let me ask you. So, this billboard had gone through a process at some point, so it's a legal billboard?
Yes.
It has. How long has it been there for?
1921, Donnelly Brothers, Donnelly and Sons put it up.
Okay.
1952, it was all redone with phenomenal girders. So, it's solid as a rock.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Anything else you want to add?
Just that, you know, an electronic billboard allows me to change it without having to go up there and, you know, redo the sign physically, so it's clear.
This is essentially for ease, ease of changing the message?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Walter White, Councilor McCarthy's office, like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we have a letter here from-
Hold on. Please, Mark.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Whitney Celestin with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Here to speak in opposition of this project. We held a butters meeting, and we've also had meetings at the Edgewater Neighborhood Association, including a side meeting with Mass Dot, who explained to us their billboard process. The community is concerned around the lighting and the constant changing frames. The requirement is only 10 seconds per image. The current billboard only presents three images at a time, and the community is more comfortable with that low number of images. So, we've gotten strong letters of opposition from the Greater Matterpanne Council, and also a letter of opposition from the Edgewater Neighborhood Association, and I think we should take the voice of these butters very seriously. Thus, the mayor's office of neighborhood services opposes on behalf of the mayor.
Thank you. Ladies?
Hi. Good morning, Madam Chair and board. My name is Fatima Ali Salam. I'm the chair of the Greater Matterpanne Neighborhood Council. In addition to the opposition, which was previously stated by the office of neighborhood services, we'd like to also add that the additional information which we learned about the amount of income, the reason therefore the change in the billboard is greatly that which they currently earn on a monthly basis. That is, in our belief, the main reason why, the purpose of the change to a digital billboard. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman. My name is June Joseph. I live on River Street in Matterpanne, and I'm here to voice my opinion that I disapprove having this billboard in Matterpanne.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and board members, I'm from West Sultan Street and Vicinity Neighborhood Association, and we support the concerns of the Greater Matterpanne Neighborhood Council in opposition of this billboard.
And maybe we have your name, please?
Robert Krichlow.
Thank you. Mark?
The notes on the BPDA recommend denial. Can you explain that?
Our policy is always to recommend denial of electronic billboards. However, if the board sees fit for approval, they must enter into a license agreement with the agency so that they can obtain their purchase. We ask that for a prior.
Given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a proposal.
Denial?
Denial.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Calling BOA 936-751-42A Como Road. This is erect a single-family dwelling on an existing 6,411-square-foot lot with two parking spaces and garage under the building. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Martin Keough. My office address is 12 Welch Avenue, Stoughton, Mass. I am here with Alex Musto, who is the applicant and owner of 42A Como Road.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Musto would like to erect a single-family dwelling on an existing 6,411 square foot lot at 42 Como Road. There will be two parking spaces and a garage underneath. A two-story, single-family house that will be approximately 1,200 square feet per floor. This particular house and this particular neighborhood, this house is in conformity with this neighborhood. This neighborhood mainly consists of single and a few two families.
So, you know, the part is, is this on the rear of another building because it has an A address?
Yes.
Explain to us how that works.
Mr. Musto bought a double lot. On the lot, immediately next to this lot is a single-family house that is in conformity. I believe we didn't get a violation on it. This is the empty lot that's right next to it. The violations that we have on the, on this particular lot, our lot width and frontage. The plan for this lot was created in 1896, so in effect, this is a pre-existing plan that preexists the current zoning code. The code, yes.
So, let me just, I'm still having a hard time visualizing it. But, so this is a lot, this is, oh, so these, oh, thank you.
Sorry. Hopefully this will help. There's Lot 57 and 58 on this plan. Lot 57, which this is, is 6,411 square feet, and Lot 58 is 6,735 feet. There are, it's 40, yes.
So, if I'm, if I'm on Como Street?
Yes.
I have 42 on one side and 42A. They both have lot frontage. They both have frontage onto Como Road?
They do.
Okay, okay. And so, your lot frontage and lot width is because of just the basic size of the pre-existing lot?
That's correct.
Okay. We have some written concerns here about an in-ground pool and something related to that?
Yes.
That might cause issues there?
We did have a neighborhood meeting. The Mayor's Office attended and Council McCarthy's office attended also. It was at the police station. It was advertised well in advance of the meeting. A few of the neighbors did show up. Those neighbors were in support of it. There was a neighbor that showed up and was concerned about the pool that used to be in the backyard. The previous owner had the house that was on Lot 58 with the pool in the backyard that went from 58 to 57. Mr. Musto filled that pool in. It's been graded, it's been filled into grade. I think some of the neighbors at the time were upset that the pool was gone because I think it might have been a community pool that kids went into. They were upset, but they understood why it was filled in. That was, believe it or not, the major concern about that property.
And who is the architect on this?
Mr. Charles Calhoun.
He was unable to make it here today. We were scheduled to be here back a few months, and he got rescheduled to today.
How are the plans, Mr. Ullrich?
Drawing, Dr. Evans.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. We're going to go on record in support of this proposal, and an abutters meeting was held back on April 11th, and our offices received no opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Waltrap White, Council McCarthy's office, also like to go on record in support.
Hugh, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for the last.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 927-969-1PBD SQUARE. This is a change of occupancy to a restaurant build-out. Repair and refinish existing concrete floor, rewire new building, blueboard. No structural changes to the interior layout. Install new restaurant equipment. The violation's Article 65, Section 8. Restaurant is condition of use in an MFR LS sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Bell Chambers, 1PBD SQUARE, Dorchester.
Will you be speaking, Hugh, sir? Will you be speaking?
No.
No? So please tell us what's being proposed.
Hi. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am here today to request a change of occupancy from a building that has been closed for approximately seven to eight years. That used to be a doctor's office into a restaurant. I got full approval of the Main Street.
So tell us about the restaurant. How many seats?
It's going to be 14 seats.
14 seats? And this is just for the restaurant use? It's not for takeout?
It's takeout, sit-down slash sit-down.
So it sounds, does it sound like this is only for the restaurant use?
This is for restaurant conditional use.
Just for the restaurant, not for takeout? Sounds like this is only for the restaurant use, not for takeout, okay? So at some point, you'll have to come in and clear up the record.
Okay, so, it's, what you have, ma'am, the request that's there is not for sit-down, take-out, sit-down slash take-out?
No, it's only for restaurant use.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're rebuilding a build-out?
Yeah.
Because, you know, what I requested is, you know, if somebody come and want a plate of, you know, food to go, to take out, you know, it can be made in a styrofoam or whatever.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but you only got cited for the restaurant use. So what's the name of your restaurant?
Flames Restaurant.
Oh, yeah, Flames, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice. How are the plans, Mr. Ullrich?
Drawing, Dr. Evans.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fendell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was an abutters meeting held back in March, and the applicant met with the Ashmont Adams Civic Association, as well as Greater Ashmont Main Streets, receiving full support from all three entities. I'd just like to clarify, he did mention at the abutters meeting, and it's fine with the abutters about the takeout. I'll work with him on that front, but we'd like to honor our record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council Sabi George's office, and would like to support this project. Thank you.
Hugh? Will, I wasn't sure if that was you back there.
It was me. Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Fair Housing and Equity, and I'd just like to go on record in support. We've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Chambers and doing a lot of private-public things with him, and I'm just here as a friend, really, to support him for the work that he does, what he's been doing. Flames is a great restaurant. If anybody's ever eaten at his restaurant, if you're not careful, the food is so good you might even bite your fingers off, so we're just here to support him for all the good work he does. He's a great community partner, a great ally of the city, and we wish him the best.
Thank you.
Did we get your full name?
Will Onuohha.
Thank you. Is anybody...
Madam Chair, we also have a letter from Senator Nick Collins in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Will there be new signage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve with the, well, we don't have any takeout language, right?
With design review for the sign.
With design review for the sign and screening and buffering.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just come back, clean the record, and get your takeout, okay?
Okay.
You're all set for the restaurant use, but go on.
So, I've been waiting for quite, like, eight months now for this, so...
Restaurant can open?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
So, okay.
Okay, so good luck, and first important step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now 10:40. I'm going to call the 10:30s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30?
And if anybody was not in the room, since we are one member short, you will need the full board to be in support of your proposal. You will need 100% positive vote.
I'll call it in. I didn't know that was...
Okay, so there's no...
I'll go back to the 10:30 cases. Calling BOA 921-284-77 to 83 Hancock Street. Mr. Rule, proviso to this petition, or only for a takeout restaurant? The violation's Article 7, Section 4, other conditional necessary as protection. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Carlos Cabral. He's from the Resca Dumb in 79 Hancock Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
It's a 90% takeout and 10% eaten.
So what's the name of the...
There was a previous restaurant there.
What's the name of the new restaurant?
It's CQ, barbecue and tacos.
And does, does the applicant have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
If he has previous? Yeah, he has.
Where?
Uh-huh. He had worked in Wira and Tambora, Washington Street in Rosendale.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ullrich?
Drawing, Dr. Evans.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Aye, please.
Hold on, hold on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christine Randeau, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Araujo, and I've known him for over 15 years, and I'm here to support his business.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with...
Usual takeout language?
Usual takeout language and screening and buffering and signs.
And this, and signage, and this petition only?
This petition only.
Is there...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos, okay?
Calling BOA 921-796-775, Morton Street. This proposal includes adjoining Apostles 3945 and 3915 and erect a four-story mixed-use building on 18,118 square foot lot. On the ground level will be 29 vehicle parking, parking space garage with two retail spaces. On the floors two to four will be 27 residential dwelling units. The violation's Article 60, Section 40. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 60, Section 40. Off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article 60, Section 40. Off-street loading is insufficient. Article 60, Section 8. The retail stores is forbidden. Article 60, Section 8. Multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 60, Section 9. The lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9. The building height is excessive. Article 60, Section 9. The building height, number of stories, is excessive. Article 60, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree, and with me is Anthony Rashido, who is the owner, developer of this project. So, as Mr. Fortune stated, the lot size is 18,118 square feet. The zoning in this neighborhood is 3F 6,000. This proposal is to build a four-story, 27-unit building with 29 parking spaces and 15 square feet of retail, which will be divisible. There'll be four affordable units associated with this. The current site, as you can see from the handout that I provided, is a vacant lot. The violation's off-street parking. We are complying with off-street parking. It is one-to-one. The variance is issued with the commercial space.
So, so one-to-one on the residential?
On the residential.
So it's the commercial that's triggering the violation?
That is correct. And the commercial was added, or the retail space was added through the Article 80 process through the BPDA. They requested for the street activation, so they requested that we put in retail space there, as well as through the community process. Use, retail is forbidden in this area, again, was brought on afterwards. Multi-family dwelling units, because it's a 3F 6,000, and FAR of .8. We are at 1.4. Height is three stories, 35 feet. We're four stories, 44 feet. And open space, 600 feet per unit. We're at 300 feet per unit. So the unit size is a 24, two bedrooms, one and a half baths, range from 753 to 914 square feet. Three one-bedrooms, one bath, and average of 723 square feet. This proposal went through a very vigorous community and regulatory process. We had eight community meetings with the abutters and civic organizations. Additionally, it went through the Article 80 process through the BPDA, and it was approved in the BPDA several months ago. And I've given you the plans that show what the existing conditions are and what is being proposed.
How are the plans, Mr. Ullrich?
Drawing, Dr. Evans.
So tell us about how circulation is going to work on the site.
With traffic flow?
The entrance to the garage will be off of Wildwood, is it?
That's, yes, that's correct.
And exit will be onto Morton, or is it two-way?
Two-way, off of Wildwood.
Okay. And do you have external garbage containers, dumpsters?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions from the board? Mark, did I ask if the plans were adequate?
You did, and they were.
Okay, and they still are.
They still are.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal went multiple times to the West Southern Association, and they've gone to the Lucerne Garden Group. We appreciate that this is bringing commercial space, adding some vitality to that corridor. And also, the number of parking spots were appreciated in the neighborhood. There were concerns about the height. However, it's not going to be any higher than the building across the street from it, and they did a good job explaining that to the community with the plans at the onsite abutters meeting. Thus, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services supports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Waltrap White, Council McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Perry, representing the Department of City. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Barbara Quichlo, and I am from the West Selton Street and Vicinity Neighborhood Association. The project managers came to our association originally, and our concerns were the height of the building, the number of units, and a traffic study for the businesses that are being proposed for Morton Street. The concerns were, for the traffic study, was that there's a blind turn. When it comes off of Blue Hill Avenue, Morton Street is a blind turn, and we were concerned for the fact that anybody who would be purchasing items or, you know, concerned with those businesses, where would they park? And there's a problem there anyway because people are double parking. And none of our concerns were brought back to us. We asked that the number of units be reduced to 17, because in the past, another developer came, and that was their, their number of units. Their 27 was above and beyond. The height of the building was a concern for the neighborhood, and the entrance and exit for the building are both on Wildwood Street. So, with it being on the corner, that would actually be an issue with traffic entering from Morton Street, and maybe one of the tenants not being in concern, they would exit onto Morton Street as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kathleen Glynn. I am a resident homeowner at 31 Clearwater Drive in Mattapan. I'm following up on a letter of opposition that I submitted dated June 18th, and I also submitted pictures of Wildwood Street and the adjoining Morton Street.
We have those, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'm rising in complaint with respect to density, traffic, the question on compliance with the disability review process, and I would argue the need for a somewhat broader community review. On the issue of density, the building, as noted, has four stories rather than three, and certainly, and the architectural drawings looks to be taller than the related abutting properties of three, three-story height. The building is four times versus three, four versus three stories. The FAR is almost half of the code requirement, and the open space per unit is half of the code requirement. In addition, with respect to traffic, since I drive Morton Street all the time, and I'm very familiar with the area, I would like you to think of Morton Street, this is not a small area. This is a major thoroughfare, and with a lot of people using it. It is not infrequent that people are double parked on that block of Morton Street. It is not unlikely and/or infrequent that Wildwood Street traffic is, cars, excuse me, are parked on both sides of Wildwood, all the way to the intersection of Morton. And therefore, I think having the in and entrance and egress on Wildwood is insufficient. The other thing I wanted to mention just briefly is that the, as I mentioned in my letter, the disability, the City of Boston Disability Commissioner, it appears relative to the small project review application that there were several questions that were not answered. So, it's unclear whether or not there is compliance with the requirements of the Disability Commission and the Disability Advisory Board. Since those answers were not provided, I have no idea whether there was subsequent compliance or not. But as of the time that that application was submitted, there were no answers. And finally, with respect to the broader community review, I have no doubt that Rodney Celestin did an excellent job trying to outreach to various abutting community groups. However, for the reasons stated, I think a broader review of a project of this size that even as you entered this into record, you heard the number of variances are extreme. So, I would think a broader review by more community input. I'm not opposed to developing a vacant lot. Everybody wants housing and needs housing. But this has literally quadrupled the size of the original lots, and it's inappropriate, and more community review is necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's just see. The sizes of the businesses. What are the sizes of those retail spaces?
So, it's a devisable space. Total square footage is about fifteen hundred square feet, some of which would be allocated toward a community space for the tenants in the building. So, this was, again, working with the BPDA. They decided how much of this they really wanted. If I could address the issue with the access and the entrance and exit off of Wildwood Street, again, as we all know, Morton Street's a busy street. The BPDA and VTD thought that that would be a much better access point. And then, the last comment was with respect to the community process. This small project review application, excuse me, was filed in June 18th of 2018. So, prior to that, we had about three or four community meetings before we went to small project review. You know, we'd go into the pre-filing process. So, you're talking about over a year of process since the application was filed.
Okay, so...
And the, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, one more thing. Because the disabilities, as you all know, when you're dealing with the BPDA, there's somebody who represents disabilities who is there to make sure that everything applies with disability.
And I did see the units marked in there. Given this information, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve. They'll need BPDA design review and continued efforts to work with the neighbors. Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. Based on density.
Based on density? Well, I guess the motion doesn't carry, and it's been denied. May I have a second motion, then?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, excuse me, something.
Well, actually, the motion has been, it's just been denied. So, unless you're willing to withdraw your motion, you're willing to withdraw your opposition and start from scratch.
I will withdraw my motion. I will withdraw.
So, may I have a motion, then?
I will make a motion.
Madam Chair, maybe at this time, maybe we could ask for a deferral to Mr. Bickerstaff's opposition on this. Give us an opportunity to go back to the community. I mean, I understand the community process, win its course, but where you guys are short on members today, maybe that would be something to consider.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
August 27th.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 916-272-26, 2 to 6 Hancock Street. This is a new proviso for takeout of the previous owner, and create a new proviso that can be transferred to the new owner. No work to be done. The violation is Article 6, Section 4. Takeout issued to petitioner, Ty Langley and Canton House Restaurant. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kenneth Algen of Algen Law Offices, 21 Hancock Street, Quincy. And with me is Nancy Lee of 78 Holbrook Street, Quincy.
So, class, what's being proposed?
It's currently a Chinese takeout restaurant, and they will continue operating it as a Chinese takeout restaurant. And we're simply seeking a...
From the new ownership?
New ownership.
Okay, what's the name of the restaurant, the new restaurant?
They're keeping the name.
Okay.
Canton House Restaurant.
Okay.
And the corporate name of the new owners is Wu's Family Restaurant. And Nancy Lee, next to me, is the president of the restaurant.
Okay, and does, do you have experience working, doing takeout?
Yes.
In Boston, where?
No, I'm sorry, no. Because I just learning.
It's her uncle, actually, the current owner is her uncle. So, she's been working at the restaurant, her and her husband, for about the past year, learning the business to facilitate the purchase.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, unfortunately, the documents are all in place, but there's no floor plan. Do you have a drawing?
I thought everything was set at the building department.
I've got all of the various documents that are involved, but I do not have a floor plan.
I do not believe I have a floor plan. But let me...
I mean, I know you're not, I know you're not doing any work, but we still require just a drawing of the establishment, an architectural drawing.
May I submit that forthwith? Not, I mean, after the hearing today? Because I went to the building department. I, they pulled all the plans. I thought everything was all set here.
Yeah, they weren't there in plans preview, and they're not now. Can we just proceed with the testimony, and then we can...
Any questions from the board? Let me just ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the sign, tell us about the sign that's there already. And does the building have grates?
The sign, the sign is just standard...
Flat, flat, okay.
Building sign that's been there. This, this, this existing business has been there since 2004.
We just want to make sure that, you know, that it's, that it's, you know, what the appearance, what its appearance is. Does it have grates on it or anything?
Grates?
Grates. You know, those pull-down grates that they have sometimes?
Oh, for the, for the, yes, there's, there is a pull-down grate.
And solid, or is it see-through?
It's, it's not solid.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, you can see, you can see into the business through the grate.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brendel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, but to hold signature until you submit a drawing of the premises.
And so, we, so there's a few things. We're gonna hold signature. It's gonna be the usual takeout provisos that goes with it. And also, a BPDA for design review for the sign and the grates, okay? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with those provisos.
Calling the last case for 9:30. Calling BOA 927-639-100PLEASANT AVENUE.
Thank you.
Mount Pleasant Avenue. Thank you. I corrected myself. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to four apartments and a rare addition in making four apartments from the existing building a new addition. The violation is Article 65, Section 42. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8. The multi-family residential use is a forbidden use. Article 65, Section 9. The lot area for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The side yard requirement is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The rear yard requirement is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. Name and address. Pull the record, please.
My name is Philip Fresco, architect, landscape architect. I just learned that even though the rejection letter cites Roxbury Zoning in Roxbury Neighborhood, 65 is Dorchester...
That is true.
...zoning, so I must defer.
Yep. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer. Motion to defer, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
The date of August 27th.
And that will give enough time for reissuance of the rejection letter and everything? Kevin?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
You want to take it?
Okay, we're gonna take up, what time is it? It's 11 o'clock. We will reconvene at 11:10.
If he's out here, I'll grab him.
Tell him.
Are you calling it now?
Um, the Board of Appeal for Tuesday, June 25th is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And if you have any conversations, please take them outside of the room. Could somebody help us and ask the guys in the hallway to keep, to keep their statements down, please? Let's see, are you gonna go? Thank you. Let's just say, in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. There is, there is one case that we will be calling once more. Because there was an error in the way the vote, the vote process, um, process was conducted. And so I just want to make sure that we clean up the record. This is in reference to case BOA 921796. And the address is 775 Morton Street. Can the applicants please return to the table? And where, where is Mr. Brickerstaff? Okay, um... Mr. Portman, you want to read it back to the record, please?
Well, we wait to look at that.
For the record, calling BOA 921796, 775 Morton Street. You want me to read the whole?
Yes, this is what the proposal is.
Okay. This is in, includes joining parcels 3945, 3915, erect a four-story mixed-use building on 18,118 square-foot lot. On the ground level will be 29 parking spaces for a parking garage and two retail spaces. On floors two to four will be 27 dwelling units. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney John Fulgini, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. With me is Anthony Rashido, who's the owner developer of the project.
We're calling this case again because there was a miscount, um, in our previous discussion. At first, there was a vote, there were six people. Because the fact of the matter is, we have, we do not have a full board. And that is continuing to cause us problems, which has resulted in one meeting being canceled and continued hiccups in, in our process. So that is just what it is, we're trying to make the best of it. So, um, so we have exactly seven people here. Five full members, two alternates on this board, we have no leeway. So, given the fact that we do not have a full board, we have to relook at the way the votes are counted. So essentially, we need five concurring votes. And, um, there is only room for one opposition. So if any of you have cases, the way you feel that there's going to be an issue, you are open to requesting a deferral for that case. So on this particular case, on 775 Morton Street, there was a miscount at the very beginning, where there were in fact five votes and one opposition. So what I'd like to do is just make everybody, again, withdraw the vote, the second vote, which was actually for a deferral, whoever made the motion, can you please withdraw it? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let's go back to the original vote, uh, which was for approval with BRA Design Review.
Continued neighborhood.
And continued neighborhood process. Whoever made the motion, was that you?
It was.
Is there, and may I have the second to that?
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You were opposed, uh, you were opposed, motion carries. So it's been carried with approval with BRA Design Review and continued neighborhood process. I know that the abutters have left, people who are here on this case. But please help us get the word out so that, that they know that it was a snafu on our part. And so that concludes that case. Let's go back to the hearings for 10:30.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30 for somebody who might have been outside the room? Hearing none. We do have one that is being postponed, so they have to re-advertise, so I'm gonna call it in for the record. Calling BOA 931-560-149, Salem Street, uh, is being postponed, so they can get it out. Who need to make a motion for deferral?
Is there, is there a motion?
Both, you both, are you the applicant?
Is there a second?
No, not a...
It's a deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
It'll be August 27th at 11:30.
Okay, so let's go back to the first item on the agenda for, for 10:30.
Calling the first case, calling BOA 930-460-499, East Sixth Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a two-family dwelling, existing condition and building rear decks, floors one through two, a new roof to the deck from the second floor. This is a strip and reshingle exterior with new window and ram. The violation is Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Edward Dunham, 37 Wildcat Lane, North Ole Mass.
Can you please tell us what kind of person you're dealing with?
Um, I'm looking to put rear decks on the first and second floor, my house on Sixth Street. My elderly father's on the second floor. And, uh, my disabled brother's on the first floor. We're just trying to get better access to the yard for them.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are...
Any questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Charlie Levin, Councilor Flynn's office, we'd like to go on record in support as well. The abutters meeting went well. Our only concern was accessibility for an abutter to, uh, reverse and exit the driveway and...
I'm sorry, the, the only issue concerned was accessibility?
Was accessibility for an abutter to, to reverse and exit his vehicle. The, the neighbors have since worked out those issues.
Madam Chair, we also have a letter from an abutter at 162 I Street in support.
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I think a motion to approve with, um, do we need it, no? Just straight approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 929-699, 744 to 748 Dudley Street. This is a room proviso, was granted to this petitioner, to change to Chong Ming Zhao at 746 Dudley Street. The violation is Article 6, Section 4, takeout issued to this petitioner only. The New Garden Chinese Restaurant, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, my name is Jackson, I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Chong Ming Zhao. Um, address is 746 Dudley Street.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry, can you?
You just gotta speak up.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, um, this is a new, a new restaurant, a new business, a new owner?
Yes.
Yes, and what's the name of the new restaurant?
The New Hope Toy.
I'm sorry?
New Hope Toy.
Okay. And, um, has your family had experience running, doing takeout before?
Yes, we currently own one in Southie.
In Southie, okay, South Boston, okay. Uh, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are de minimis, but they're okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Christine Brandao, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Will, will there be new signage?
Yes, there will be.
Are there grates on the front of the, of the restaurant?
Are there what?
Grates, the ones you pull down in front of the windows?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, given that information, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, for approval of BPDA Design Review signage and grates and the usual takeout language.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA 931-471, 47 Emerson Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a single-family dwelling, full renovation to include extended living space in the basement, bathrooms, remodel kitchen, new exterior stairway. Violation is Article 27S, this, dash, five, this is in the South Boston I pod. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Crystalopolis, 60 Bay's Water Street, East Boston, Mass.
Can you speak up, I'm just having a hard time hearing today.
Crystalopolis, 60 Bay's Water Street, East Boston, Mass.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
Uh, just a full renovation and a, um, extended living space into the basement.
And what's the basement space going to be used for?
Uh, just like a, a bedroom and living space.
So how many bedrooms will be in the entire building?
Three bedrooms total.
Three bedrooms?
Yes.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Um, eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. Okay, how are the plans, um, Mr. Ehrlich? This, is this owner occupied?
Yes, it will be.
It is, okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go in record on support, thank you.
Madam, the Chair members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office, the Councilor would like to go on record in support as this is a single-family interior renovation. The meeting went well and we spoke with neighbors who also support the project, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling BOA 927-273-133, Beacon Street. This is extend legal occupancy of the building as a dormitory beyond the current expiration date of 6/30/2019. As set by the previous Board of Appeal. No work to be done, the violation is Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions, BOA 2015 decision, and Articles 8, Section 7, conditionally approved by the position, previous decision of the BOA. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, Members, this is an application on behalf of my client Fisher College to essentially, uh, extend a previous proviso of the Board, 133 Beacon Street is a 34-bed dormitory of Fisher College. It has been as such since 1968, when Fisher purchased 133 and 131 Beacon Street and began using both buildings as dormitories. Uh, 133 Beacon Street, at the time, had a legal occupancy of lodging house and dormitory. That was changed by this Board simply to dormitory, uh, in 2003. Uh, I believe I was the attorney in that matter. And since that time, this has come back periodically to the Board for extensions of a proviso, sunset provision on the continued length of the use. Those sunset provisions, uh, the, the time periods have varied from three to five years. The last time we were at the Board was 2009. The present, uh, proviso would result in the discontinuance of the use as of, I believe, June 30th of this year. My clients did meet with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. I believe that there is a, uh, NAB recommendation of a five-year sunset clause. I'll be corrected if that's not the case, because, uh, I've been informed that the BRA has a four-year sunset provision as part of its recommendation. But as was noted...
Mr. Marancy, let me just ask, has Fisher College, at this point, done an institutional master plan?
Uh, my understanding is there, there is no institutional, uh, master plan.
And they're not required to do one, um...
Uh, well, I know that we have been working with them to get an IMP filed with the city.
Yeah.
It's close on their square footage citywide, whether or not they are required. I think it's 50,000, 50,000 square feet?
Okay.
Of space is required for an institutional master plan. We have been, since this was approved by the Board, there have been ongoing discussions, lengthy discussions about having to file an IMP, it just hasn't happened.
Because I do remember that popping up every time it's, um, come before this Board, whether this is an institution that's IMP eligible or not.
I would have to double-check when I got to the Board on that.
And, and the plans are adequate to...
Yeah, they're as built, which is, which is fine for this purpose.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Shanice Pimentel. As the applicant stated, the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay has asked that the proposal be approved for a period of five years, which was agreed upon by the applicant. Following these agreements, I'd like to go on record in support of the proposal.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Elliot Lafferty, Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. And, uh, as stated, um, we agreed, uh, that this would be a five-year extension. And Fisher agreed, and we're very, very pleased and appreciative of their doing that. By the way, in, in, uh, your discussion about institutional master plan, uh, I believe that they sold a building that had, that had pushed them over the need for an institutional master plan. And so then they fell below it again.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Um, may I have a motion for five years, please?
Motion to approve, second.
For five years?
Yes.
Okay, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling BOA 827-500, 72 Burbank Street. This is to construct a new six-story, 36-unit residential building. The violation is Article 32, Section 6, this is in G-Cod. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 66, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 66, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 66, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass, attorney for Forest Properties, the proponent of this project. Um, I've just handed up a, handout for the Board to follow along.
The table, please?
Yes. So to my right is D'Artagnan Brown from Embark Studios, who is our architect. To his right is Nick Derby, the project manager for 72 Burbank Street project. And to the far right is Anderson Leibert, who is the chief operating officer of Forest Properties, the proponent of this project. This project has gone through the small project review Article 80 process with the BPDA, uh, specifically subject to the compact unit policy pilot program. Um, the application was pending during the creation of the compact unit policy at the BPDA. And the BPDA asked us to wait to go... BPDA, and the BPDA asked us to, uh, wait to go to the board until such time as the compact unit policy had been approved. Um, it was approved in January of 2019, and this case proceeded to the BPDA board in February of 2019. And I'd like to submit for the record, um, our original small project review application and the BPDA board memo approving, um, the project as 32 units under the compact unit policy.
So this is, um, a pilot, okay? And, um, this is a market grade? It's not, uh, through the Fenway CDC or anything like that?
It is not, however, um, the Fenway CDC is our direct and immediate abutter at 70 Burbank Street, and we have reached an agreement with them concerning certain aspects of the alley behind their building and the alley behind this proposed new structure. Um, and that agreement with the Fenway CDC is referenced in the BPDA board memo. Um, but it is not a specific project with them. It's a 32-unit building. Four of the units, however, will be subject to the IDP, and there is an affordable housing restriction agreement that will be entered into, uh, with the BPDA for those four affordable units. So 28 market rate units and four IDP units. The specific zoning issues that are before you today, members of the board. First, we seek a conditional use permit under the groundwater conservation overlay district. Um, it's my understanding that BWSC has not yet approved the plans, but the Boston Groundwater Trust has reviewed the plans, and that the proposal will be to hold the decision for signature pending receipt of the Article 32 compliance letter. Um, next, there are four, uh, zoning variances that are required for this project.
Let's get Christian on the record.
Sure thing.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And at this time, we do request a whole of a signature. I have confirmed that the plans are before Boston Water and Sewer, and they are under review.
So as you can see in the handout, the proposed building is going to be constructed on a vacant parcel of land, which is approximately 3,500 square feet at 72 Burbank Street, behind a very large building on the corner of West Lenav and Hemmenway called Parkside Tower, which is also owned by the project proponent. And they've owned this vacant parcel for quite some time and are now proposing that it be developed. The zoning issues before you are, first, um, off-street parking insufficiency. Given the location of this project and its proximity to a number of green line stops at Symphony and Heinz Auditorium, and bus stops and its walkability, um, no parking is proposed for this compact unit building. Instead, pursuant to the compact unit policy, um, we are required to provide bike room storage for bicycles, and as part of the community benefits package, there will be, um, a five-year subscription for blue bike membership for all of the residents of the building.
So, so you're expecting to close down the building in five years, then?
No, it was just, it, that's-
Why, how, why five years and not, not a longer period of time?
That was the proposal and recommendation of the BPDA as part of its, uh, board memo. But it is likely, if the program is successful, that it will be continued. Um, second is the floor area ratio. This is the Fenway Neighborhood District multifamily residential, so the use of multifamily residential isn't allowed use. Um, the maximum FAR is four. The proposed is 5.55. Uh, third is a usable open space insufficiency. None is being provided, and in part, that was in response to the community review process to not include any balconies or decks on the building, so no usable open space is provided. Um, and last is the rear yard insufficiency. The requirement under the code is 20 feet, and proposed is 11.5. Um, as I mentioned, we entered into an agreement with Fenway CDC regarding trash removal and their parking behind their building. And if I could turn it over to D'Artagnan Brown, just to briefly go over the architectural concepts.
Can I just ask, this, um, reading, reading the micro, the, the policy-
Compact unit policy, yes.
Compact unit policy. Looks like that you have, looks like you have to provide community space-
Yes.
-in the building. So, where is that space?
So, uh, Madam Chair, D'Artagnan Brown, architect from Embark. So, off of the first-floor entry in the building vestibule, there is a 600-square-foot amenity space that meets the compact living policy requirement. In addition, uh, beyond that, we have, uh, ample bike storage, uh, that's in the garden level.
Uh, so it's 600 square feet for all units?
Correct.
And that, that-
That's per the guideline.
-correct calculation?
Correct.
It's based on a formula in the compact unit policy.
Yep. Okay. How are the plans, um, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
And, and Madam Chair, on the subject of plans, um, because of the compact unit policy pilot being a unique program, continuing BPDA design review is specifically required, um, more than usual. We have to submit a full set of plans to the BPDA so that it gets approved under the compact unit policy, um, and there was some shifting around of the space.
Hold on, hold on. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant proposes and agreed on the following conditions. The unit not be rent, the unit be rented to non-student professionals, and outside organization will conduct compliance reviews, offer to existing residents of Clearway Street lifetime leases, make contributions to the MBTA and parks, and increase number of two-bedroom units. The applicant has signed a memorandum of agreement with the Fenway CDC, and following these agreed-upon terms, I would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Nick Carter, Councilor Zachem's office. We'd like to echo the mayor's comments and go on record in support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Carter. I represent the Carpenter's Union, the California Congress of Union Carpenters, that leave and work proceed with possible want to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record and tell us briefly what your opposition is based on.
My name is Daniel Epstein, and I represent 5456 Burbank Street. I am the trust, one of the trustees. I am also own some other properties in the neighborhood, and my address is 779 Washington Street in Brookline, Massachusetts. And my opposition to this project has to do with the fact that it creates a fire hazard. It also inflicts pain on other units on the alley. They only made an agreement-
Please, please, can you stay at-
Can I give some-
No, I need, I need you on the record, because that, that tapes you.
Can you give us the record?
You, she'll, she'll take it.
I do. I brought you some examples.
So go ahead with your testimony.
All right, 5456 Burbank Street is down the end of the alley. These people could not come to an agreement with us for anything dealing with the trash. As a matter of fact, when I went to the only meeting I knew about, the community meeting, I asked them, "What about the trash truck that goes down the alley?" And the young lady said-
So, so please, so if I can summarize-
Okay.
Your issue is trash?
No.
And what else?
The issue is, is they're blocking the alley from trucks, fire trucks-
Okay, so you-
-or other items getting down the alley.
Okay, so blocking alley, what else is your issue?
Okay. Uh, the other alley is, the other issue is it does create a fire hazard, um, for the neighborhood in that what they're building will be, uh, I believe, within nine feet of another building, every window. And, uh, I do not believe, I looked inside, that building does not have sprinklers, and by fire code, it would need to be, if it is 25%, okay? I did not measure all the windows, but I've done this once before. Um, and if it is 25%, which I think it's more, they would have to be at least 15 feet away, if not 25 feet away, based on fire codes.
So your, your issues are, one, the, the blocking of the alley?
Yes.
Two is trash. Three is fire hi-hazard. Anything else?
Um, and, uh, light air and lifestyle for the people who live in those buildings, which I believe the Fenway FCDC threw away, because, uh, this building is going to be within nine feet of every window in one case, and less than nine feet in another case.
Okay.
And I have a picture of that in both, both things.
Okay.
Uh, and the last item is, this lot of land, in the last hundred years, has not been built on. It was a part, a separated parcel, of which the FCDC building on Burbank Street was one half separated, and 91 Westland got the other half, and this has been an open spot. And the trash truck needs that space to be able to turn down the alley.
Yep.
And it cannot go down the alley.
I'm not very familiar with that.
And neither could a fire truck.
Okay.
And there are, if you take a look at my pictures, you'll see how many buildings are on the alley.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Can you guys respond? We have the issue of blocking of the alley. So you can have a seat of, um, of the fire access, basically, are the two issues. And I have the next question for you is that, um, you sta, uh, somebody stated that it was, uh, going to be rented to non-student professionals, and that marketing or rentals would be done through a third party. Who is that, who is that? So those are the three things I'd like responses to.
Um, I'll start with the non-student restriction. That is specifically in the BPDA board memo of approval that requires that the building be, uh, rented to non-students. And in the agreement with the Fenway CDC, which is our direct and immediate abutter, there is a provision that, um, allows for the Fenway CDC and requires Forest Properties to employ a third party to do an annual rent roll audit. And in the event of non-compliance with the no-student restriction, a fine and penalties imposed on the Fenway, on Forest Properties, sorry. We offered that role as third-party rent-roll auditor, the Fenway CDC, and they, they declined. So it will be incumbent on Forest Properties to retain a third party to do the annual rent-roll audit to ensure compliance with that restriction. And I gather, we haven't, uh, executed yet, but I gather that that will be part of our affordable rental housing agreement with the BPDA, since it's part of the board memo. So that's that question. Um, I think I'll let the architect address the rear building alignment with the other buildings on the block as it relates to the alley condition.
So as part of the design, uh, process, we pulled the building back. Our building used to extend, the proposed building extended past the other buildings on the rear alley. Uh, through the process, we pulled it back over four feet to, we pulled it back over four feet to a line. We've also chamfered the corner of the building, and on the passageway between our building and 91 Westland, which is fully sprinkled in regards to the fire code.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that building. I care about your building.
We added an extra two and a half feet to the width of the original proposed alley to have over 10 feet for access.
You know, I've driven down that vacant lot and that alley, and trying to get two to the other end is, is fairly impossible. So you've an, a lot enough room for, I know, garbage trucks to get through there?
Correct. And we've coordinated with, um, as Mark mentioned also, with CDC and access to their parking, we've vetted through all of that.
There's, there's, there's two alleys, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I know.
There's the alley from Burbank down to the back, and then the one that extends up to Westland Avenue, which is not passable by motor vehicles.
Okay. Um, given this information, may I have a motion, please?
Can I speak with reference to what you said?
Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review and continued work with the neighbors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will hold the letter, uh, the signature until we get the letter from, um, a G-COD letter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 935-217-40, 48 to 50 Salem Street. This is Salem Peter?
Yeah, he's right there.
This is a change of use from a restaurant to retail branch, retail bank branch with, with a tenant and ATM. Violation Article 54, Section 12, banking additional use in the Hanover CC sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Peter Lyons, uh, here to represent Chase Bank, uh, who will be the tenant in that site. Um, this is, uh, my address is 99 Fulton Street, Boston, Mass, 02109.
So what's the total square footage for this branch?
Uh, approximately 989 square feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We completed a full community process for this proposal, starting with an abutter's meeting, which was held on February 11th. They also have the support of the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, as well as the North End Waterfront Residents Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, we also have a letter from the North End Waterfront Residents Association in support as well.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 935-781-33 to 59 Congress Street. This is to install bathroom sinks. Countertops, painting, new sprinkler. The violation's Article 8, Section 3, 36A primarily is a takeout. Name and address for the record, please.
Jessica, 1024 Commonwealth Avenue.
Tell us what you're proposing to do.
We're looking to, uh, construct a new restaurant in a newly renovated building.
And so tell us, one, the name, the, the name of the new restaurant?
Love Art Poke.
I'm sorry?
Love Art Poke.
Okay. And, um, nice name. Um, and tell us about your experience with takeout?
Um, yeah, we are experienced with takeout. We have another restaurant, Fenway.
What, what's the name in the Fenway?
Love Art Seashine.
Oh, okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, this is also under landmark review as well.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
With the usual takeout language, to this petition only? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Before I call the next case, I'm gonna call the 11/30s. Are there deferrals or withdrawals for 11/30? Address, sir?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Tracy from O'Neill and Associates in Boston, 21 to 23 Wyman Street in Jamaica Plain.
Hold on two seconds. For the record, calling BOA 903-629-21 to 23 Wyman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Tracy from O'Neill and Associates at 31 New Charden Street in Boston. We're here respectfully requesting another deferral. We've had a robust process where we've enjoyed some community support, uh, but as this is a new and emerging industry, I think a lot of folks are still sort of wrapping their arms around this. Uh, so in consultation with the city, we're asking for another deferral. We think we're close. We think we're ready to come back soon. Uh, we just need a little more time.
So, um, is this your second?
It is. And the first one, if you remember, was because we changed the language from Lodging House to Boutique Hotel. And, and again, we're, we're close. It's just been a, a little difficult for everyone to wrap their arms around. But we have support and we feel good about the path we're on.
I make a motion for a deferral.
Motion to oppose the deferral.
I make a motion for a deferral.
Second a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You'll have, you'll have a deferral, deferral date of September 10th at 1130. Thank you. Counselor, address, please.
343 Chelsea Street.
Uh, the address again?
343 Chelsea. For the record, it's 343, 345, correct?
Correct.
For the record, BOA 889-514, 343 to 345 Chelsea Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, requesting a further deferral on this. Uh, we did have an opportunity, uh, to speak with the mayor's office, as well as the director of butters. We believe we do have a solution that is acceptable to the neighbors. Uh, it will require some modification in the fact that there's a six-member board today. Uh, we're respectfully requesting a deferral.
Is this a second deferral?
It would be, yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
You'll also have a deferral date of September, September 10th at 1130.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, address, please.
141 West Second.
For the record, calling BOA, there's two of them?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, BOA 863-411, 141 West Second Street. There's also companion case, BOA 863-415, 141 West Second Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350, uh, West Broadway. Uh, Madam Chair, as I've said before, I don't actually represent the applicant in this case, however, I do know him and I've been, uh, helping him. He asked me if I would be here today to request a deferral. On his behalf, I agree to. The circumstances are that this matter is for roof deck in South Boston. Uh, the applicant filed two appeal applications, one for zoning relief, one for building code relief. They both came to this board. The building code relief is actually for release from accessibility requirements, which this board cannot grant. He was directed to the Architectural Access Board.
Are you requesting a deferral?
Yes, but I just-
From both cases?
No. So if, if I can explain-
So which one are you requesting?
My client has a hearing at July 1 at the Architectural Access Board. I believe the prudent action would be to dismiss, uh, so I will withdraw the building code application that was made.
So which one is that? Is eight-six?
Eight-six-three-four-one-five.
Okay, so the, so you're making a, so you're requesting withdrawal for that?
That is, I am, I'm withdrawing that. This board can't grant.
Okay, hold on. So may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to withdraw.
Denial without prejudice?
Denial without prejudice, sorry.
It's a withdrawal, okay?
And on the zoning, uh, that needs to wait for action from the AAD. My, my friend, who's not my client, advises that, uh, they have a, a date before the Architectural Access Board of July 1.
Okay. So may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion for a deferral.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
It'll be September 10th at 1130.
Thank you.
So just, just to be, uh, clear, the 141 West Second is a withdrawal. It's a denial without prejudice.
The building, building code is withdrawn.
So you have the name, the address, please?
Address, please.
Alcantar, 40 Harvest Street.
Excuse me?
Alcantar, 40 Harvest Street.
Harvest.
Harvest.
Calling BOA 821-295-40 Harvest Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Alcantar, 40 Harvest.
Can you speak up, sir?
Alcantar.
Are you deferring?
Are you deferring or withdrawing?
Withdraw.
You're withdrawing? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been denied without prejudice, so you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Bearing number, go back to the 1030s. Calling BOA 933-749, 1230 to 1264 Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy to include a restaurant with sit-down takeout at 1244 Washington Street. The violation's Article 64, Section 18. Restaurant with takeout is conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, member of the board, my name is Sue Say, 500 St. Street, Boston.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Well, the, um, it's for a restaurant takeout, change of occupancy, and in the beginning it was a mistake.
I'm sorry?
It was a mistake in the application. It was takeout and sit-down. So the sit-down, uh-
It's, it, well, it's restaurant, it's, okay.
Just for takeout.
What's the na, what's the name of the restaurant?
Palini Santé.
Sorry?
Palini Santé.
Okay. Okay. Um, and do you have experience with takeout?
Yes.
Where?
Boston.
Where?
South Station and, uh, East Boston, on Vennington Street.
On Vennington? Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We don't have any issues with this request. Uh, this street, on Washington Street, is a main, uh, commercial thoroughfare through the south end. Has plenty of takeout restaurants there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, usual takeoff language. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 926-108, 27 Dwight Street. This is an amendment, the architectural structural fire protection plans. This is rear deck and balcony extension. Violation Article 64, Section 9, the townhouse, row house extensions into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is, my name is Roberto Leon. I'm the architect for the project and I'm here representing the developer.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Um, we are proposing a rear deck on the second floor of the building. We have other decks that are by right, but the one on the second floor, we are seeking permission for. This deck extends seven, six feet, uh, from the, uh, rear wall. And we have one question for the board, if it would be possible, the way that we showed on the drawings is, we have these bays and the rear deck comes, uh, kind of zigzags around the, the bays. And we were wondering if it would be possible to just keep it straight, uh, from the furthermost bay, six feet, uh, so that there's no more jogging of the, the bay in and out. We have, um, had a meeting with the butters.
And is this bracket supported?
Yes, it is bracket supported.
Okay. Um, Mr. Olick, how are the plans? It's-
Uh, the drawings are adequate. I'm not, uh, which bay are you talking about?
Um, so if you look at, uh, the Plan A 101.
Yeah.
Um, the way that we have the, uh, the decks right now, they, they kind of like come in and out. And with the bay here, we were wondering if we could just extend them straight across.
So is that more than six feet then?
No, it's not, it's not more than six feet from the bay.
So you're-
But, but, but from the flat wall, how many feet would it be?
From the flat, from the flat bay wall. That's what we're asking, six feet.
So you just want to carry the, uh, outer line of the, uh, all the way across?
Correct.
So, but, but what does the, it make that part of the deck? Does it make it eight feet?
It would, it would make it eight feet from the, uh, we're building a new wall. We completely took down the rear wall, uh, so it would make it eight feet from that wall, but six feet from, from the bays.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. They did present the same design to both the butters and the Eighth Streets Neighborhood Association, which is, uh, not opposed to the design. And also, we have received plenty of letters of support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. Um, neighbors and abutters and then, um, Eighth Street Neighborhood Association are also on board with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Um, I make a motion to approve, uh, I don't know what would make sense to have a word final arbiter deal with the, the change in the-
No, no, no. Um, how about you submit, oh, actually you can put a proviso in there.
Okay.
So that it, uh, straightens it out.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to, uh, approve with a proviso that, uh, the drawings are submitted to reflect the, the, uh, the change nature of the, the lining of the deck.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 908-555-290 Commercial Street. This is to extend a proviso for parking for 69 vehicles for a fee. The violation's Article 6, Section 03A, additional conditions in a restricted parking district. Article 54, Section 9, the parking lot is forbidden in an MFL, MFR LS sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Mohammed 343 Congress Street. This has been a parking lot, no change. It's been, you know, we've been managing the lot since, uh, 2016. And we're not adding or changing anything. So we're over here to apply the parking permit.
Is the permit still valid?
Uh, yes.
When does it expire?
Uh, June 30th.
Pardon?
Pardon.
June 30th? Okay. Okay. Um, and, um, in the past, we've given three-year extensions on these?
Correct.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, um, Mr. Olick?
No, it's a good drawing. They're, they're adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Screening and buffering.
It looks, it, the, the, it looks fine. Any, uh, other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant does have the support of both neighborhood groups, the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, as well as the North End Waterfront Residents Association. And at this time, there are no issues with the lot, with the abut, so we would like to go on record in support. Any?
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. I'd like to echo the comments of the mayor's office and the council would like to go on record in support. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve for three years. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And you're here for the next one, too?
Right. I did those companion case, okay. Uh, calling BOA, BOA 882-063, 181 to 183 North Washington Street. This is parking for seven vehicles for a fee. The violation's three, Article 3-1A, restricted parking district. Article 32, Section 6. This is G-Card applicability in Article 64, Section 12, parking lot is conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, 3 Mohammed Washington, 343 Congress Street. Same situation, no change. We managed this lot since 2013 and we're trying to, uh, apply a parking permit.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And I did have some, uh, back and forth with the proponent. In addition, I also connected with inspectional services. This was simply just improperly cited. Um, this is just extending, you know, a previous proviso, uh, for parking. So, um, also in this area, G-Card, it's only triggered if, if the proponent's taking down, but I don't believe there's any work proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Are you next to the, is this, is this parking lot right next to this garage?
In the garage, right?
Is there a, uh, it's, it looks like an automotive garage?
Used to be a gas station. There's a, yeah, there's a building.
So, and the, so the parking is in front of it?
Yes.
And it looks like you have a code cut all the way on to, all, all the way across, right?
Correct.
And no screening and buffering?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. So just wanted to clarify. Um, may, did I ask? Is, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. This applicant also has the support of the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council and the North End Waterfront Residents Association, and there are no issues with the butters at this time, so we would support the extension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of Councillor Edwards. The council would like to go on record in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve, uh, with BPDA design review, uh, for screening and buffering here.
And for three years?
Three years, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Madam Chair, before I call the next case, it's after 12, and I've been told by Council, Mark Lacass, that they are withdrawing, uh, 306K Street, so I'm going to call it in for the record. Calling BOA 889-104-306K Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass. Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Before you was a motion for reconsideration of this board's prior denial without prejudice of the iPod permit for 306K Street. And at this time, uh, I am making a request to withdraw the motion for reconsideration.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So the withdrawal of the motion is-
Yes. I don't even know how this got on the agenda, honestly, so it's, it's, thank, thank you.
With John. Yes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 939-082-25-Monument Avenue. This application for construction of a three-story rear addition. The existing nonhabitable basement will be converting to living space. Roof deck is accessed by a hatch. Violation is Article 62, Section 8. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 62, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 62, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. This is addressed on 51 Dobson Road, Grand Street, Mass. 4184. With me today is Ms. Allison Silver, who's the owner of the property. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to erect a two-story rear addition with roof deck and rear deck and extend living space into the basement. The property will remain a one-family dwelling, and as a result of the community process, we have reduced the addition from three floors to two floors in the rear.
So that means your height, height violation is...
That is correct.
Okay.
The zoning sub-district here is RH 1500, and the violations are as follows. Madam Chair, the FAR required in this area is 2.0. Currently, that would require 1,628 square feet. We are proposing 2,926 feet with the addition. The addition that is being proposed is approximately 825 square feet.
How many, 125 square feet?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and twenty-five square feet.
The building height requirement is three stories, 35 feet. We're at three stories, 41 feet, which is pre-existing, non-conforming. Open space is 150 square feet per unit. We're proposing 85. And the rear yard setback is 25 feet required, and we have zero, which is also pre-existing, non-conforming.
Okay.
Basically, Madam Chair, what we're doing is just filling in the rear L.
So tell us about the basement, the extension into the basement.
Is there living space in there? Yes.
Is there bedrooms down there?
No.
No? And what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Seven-six.
Seven-six. How are the plans, Mr. Eulich?
I haven't got a chance to look at the plans preview, so I'm looking now, but if you could give me a second.
In the meantime, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Clinton Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support. Abudders meeting was held back in March. There were some concerns specific to the rear addition behind the house, to which changes were made. Would also like to recommend BPDA design review specific to this location. It is going on up towards the Buckle Hill Monument to Monument F. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrón from the office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support. We did receive a letter a few days ago from the Charlestown Preservation Society removing their opposition to the proposal due to the changes that the proponent has made. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hi, how are you? Madam Chair, board. I'm speaking on behalf of the 12 to 14...
Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yep. Matt Griffiths, 14 Soli Street, representing the condo trust 12 and 14 Soli Street that directly abuts from behind, including my wife and my neighbor Patricia, who is not here and traveling. This project concerns us for many reasons, most material being the scope and the expansion...
Excuse me, can you just tell us bullet points? There's no need to read us the letter. You can put it in the record.
Sure. Happy to. So the full expansion to the back does not leave room for an exit. That sort of requires them to jump out of a second-floor window into our backyard. Our house and our neighbor's house is wood paneling with a wood deck, so the, the scope of the project has us concerned for the work that will be done and any issues from a disaster perspective that could affect our property. And lastly, my, my wife works from home, and given the sheer scope, there will be almost certain need to use our property in order to make this project work. So regardless of your decision, we just wanted you to know we will not be allowing use of our property for this project. So, thank you.
Can you name an address for the record, please?
Good morning. My name is Rebecca King. I live at 27 Monument Ave., so I am also a direct abutter to the subject property. I would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal. I submitted a letter dated May 15th, and the summary points of that are the increased risk of fire to the surrounding wood frame buildings. They had no plans for sprinklers when this was presented at the community meeting, and none of the abutting buildings have sprinklers in existence. There's a lack of egress from the first and second floor, especially with the removal of the windows, which is part of the second proposal that was submitted. The living space, the way it was presented, there are no additional bedrooms or anything that are added to this, so it's just a question of hardship versus what they're kind of putting everyone around them through. And then, sorry, so they can add 640 square feet by just finishing within their existing footprint versus the overall 827 that they're asking for, and that would have been supported potentially by a lot of the abutters. We were never, they, I mean, the community meeting, I would say, didn't go well, and the owners of the property never reached out to any of the abutters to say, hey, what would make this proposal workable for anyone else? So that sort of raises concern about construction and stuff going forward.
Madam Chair, we also have a letter from 16 Soli Street, directly behind the property, from Peter and Donna LaCam, and it's opposed to the project as well.
Okay. Given that information...
Let me just ask, having had a chance to look quickly at the plans, what is the access to the roof?
Hatch. Yep.
Yes, and how large is that deck?
The deck is, I don't know if I can see here. The roof deck is 14 by 23, and the second-floor deck is 18 by 8.
18 by 18, okay.
Eighteen, 18 by 8.
Eight, okay.
And just to clarify, the roof deck, the 14 by 23, was an existing roof that we had to repair, the roof underneath, so we're just putting that deck back on. Obviously, a new permit, but it's a, it was a pre-existing deck, the first...
And previously, it was access by hatch?
It's access, that, that deck is accessed through the bathroom, and it wouldn't change. The top deck would be a hatch.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, have a good day.
Calling BOA 932-408-20 to 22 Monument Street. This is to renovate attic, living space, mechanical storage space, and deck, and install a spiral stairway and half-bath. In addition, a third story to be detached to family structure in the rear of 22 Monument Square. Violation, Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction, extension of a non-conforming building, the structure behind a structure. Article 62, Section 25, additional third story without, with a walkout deck. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 62, Section 8, excessive FAR. Article 62, Section 8, dimensional regulations, front yard requirements, 62-30, conformity with an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Patrick Sweeney of Morrissey Sweeney, 261 Main Street, Charlestown. With me is Linda Masiemkin, the architect, and the owner, Eric Darcy. Just for, for background on this, members of the board and chairwoman, this matter was before the board in March of 2013, seven, 2012, sorry. At that time, Eric and his brother Scott owned the property and presented with Jack French doing the, the plans, virtually these same plans. As life circumstances changed, Eric got married, had a couple of children, still lives in the property. Scott got married, had a child, and said, I can't continue to live in the property. So Eric bought him out. As a result, they did not have the money, the wherewithal, to finish these plans back in 2012. Go forward seven years, Eric has now been able to save the money to be able to do this. So we're back in front of you with plans that were, as I say, approved some time ago.
So Linda, is this plan pretty much the same as was submitted in '12?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Let's see, was there a violation that concerned me? Nope. How are the plans, Mr. Eulich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Clinton Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held an abudders meeting back in April, and we've received evidence for one so far. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrón from the office of Council Edwards. Council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review. Jeff, we don't need it, right?
Yeah. Are there any external charges?
Yeah.
If there are external...
Okay, let's do, let's do...
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 931-406-223-LONDON STREET. This is to confirm occupancy as a three-family dwelling, change to a four-family residential dwelling, and also extend living space into the basement and renovate the building. Violation, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking lot requirement is insufficient parking. Article 53, Section 8, a table A basement units are forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, MFR is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Noel DeCollo, the owner of 223 London Street. As was mentioned, the proposal is to completely renovate the existing three-story structure and to also add a, legalize a garden-level apartment in the basement. The, and I had to say that because it is have a full walkout, and the rear of the property will have 7'6" floor-to-ceiling height, and the building will be completely sprinklered. The new unit, or proposed unit, at the garden level would be a two-bed, one-bath, 719-square-foot unit. The other units that would be renovated in the building, the first floor is a two-bed, one-bath, existing, 1,118 square feet. The second-floor unit is a three-bed, two-bath at 1,110 square feet. And the third-floor unit is a three-bed, two-bath, 1,125-square-foot unit. We did work with our neighbors and get support of the Maverick Association, as well as the abutters. I can briefly go over the violations as well. One use, it is a 3F area, so we are proposing a 4F with a basement unit. Allowable FAR is 1.0, although it's pre-existing, we're now at 1.34. What we're proposing is 1.71. The additional lot area, open space, and parking are all pre-existing violations as well. I, I can pause for any questions that, that the board may have.
So what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven foot six, it will be.
That's, that's the height? Okay, because there's no elevations here.
Correct. In the second, if you look in the third page, D1.1 and D1.2, it does say the ceiling heights on the unit, so seven foot six. A1.1, I'm sorry, Mr. Eulich, seven foot six inches right in the middle.
Okay. Then let me ask you, as long as, on that, let me ask you another question. It's unclear whether there's a separation of utilities for the...
There is on the A1.1.
Yes.
If you notice, the sprinkler room, foyer room, that would have that separate way in, and then another doorway to get to the unit. So if you notice, there's a door. You come down the stairs, it'd be the common area, and then the...
Okay, and then I see another space marked HVAC behind the hallway, which seems to be part of the unit.
That is not part of the unit. That would be part of the hall, so as you come down the stairs, that would be part of their HVAC in their unit. Correct. So it's their own...
So what happens with the other units? Do they have their own HVAC?
In their units, because it's complete gut renovation.
So what you're calling the sprinkler room has electrical and...
Correct.
And water as well?
Correct.
So this is the gut rehab?
Yes.
And tell, tell me, because it looks like the rear door of this unit opens up to a space under the hall on the first-floor plan. So what does it open up to?
Uh, it's the back door.
So that's a full walkout of the rear?
It's a full walkout, so those windows in there on the side are window wells? So what are they?
On the side of the building?
Yeah, on bedroom one, bedroom two.
Yes. Window wells, correct.
So if this is a gut rehab, how, do you have to make this building handy, have a handicapped accessible unit?
It wasn't required under the code, but we could have access through the back, directly out and on the side.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Eulich?
Well, now that I got those questions answered, they're adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and I would like to go on the record in support, based on the support that this project has from the association, from the civic association and from the neighbors. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we have a letter here from an abutter, 105 Saratoga Street, in opposition.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nope. Is there one second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's been approved.
Calling BOA 900-556-66-Wordsworth, Wordsworth Street. This is to erect a five-unit residential with parking for four vehicles. Violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking lot requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, MFR is forbidden use in a 2F-3,000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, with me is Tré Loria from Joy Street Design, who is the architect for the project. Madam Chair, this project is located in the Orient Heights Harborview neighborhood section of East Boston. Our proposal is to take an existing 5,000-square-foot lot and erect a five-unit multifamily dwelling with four parking spaces to the rear. This will also reduce an existing curb cut on the street down significantly to allow for a little bit, a little bit more off-street parking. Upon completion, this is intended for homeownership as a condominium. Couple of things I want to point out with respect to the plan and the design here. The building is intentionally moved more towards the right of the property. The abutting property owner is the same owner of the lot, but one of the things that we had worked out through the community process is specifically with the abutter to the left. Locating our driveway to the left of our building will allow for access, not only for our parking area, but will open up an opportunity to create access for the abutting property owner as well. We've worked out an arrangement where the abutting property owner will have access over our lot in order to create additional off-street parking for their property. There are a number of other concessions that we've made as well with the neighborhood. This originally was started as a six-unit building, and it did include a proposed roof deck. It's been reduced down to five with the elimination of the roof deck as well. With respect to the unit sizes, they range from about 765 square feet for the one-bedroom up to about 1,200 square feet for the three-bedroom. And as I said, these, this does include four parking spaces. With respect to the relief that's necessary, this is located a 2F-3,000 district, therefore multifamily use would require a variance. In addition, our floor-to-air ratio, the allowable FAR is .8. We're slightly above that at .87, so pretty consistent with what's allowed under Article 53. The height of the building is actually below the actual height limit, which is 35 feet in the district. However, the number of stories would be exceeded based upon the full build-out of the third level, so we do require variance for the stories, but the intent here is met with the building being below the 35-foot height limit. With respect to the parking, there is, a total of seven spaces would be required. We are providing four, but in addition to closing up a substantial portion of that curb cut in front of this property that presently exists, we would be adding on-street parking as well for the neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Nice design. How are the plans, Mr. Eulich?
Go on, girl.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support, based on the support that this project has from the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrón from the office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board. Andrea and Carlos Brown. We're from 62 Wordsworth Street, the abutters to the left. We would like to go on record in light of the agreement for an easement and potential parking for our property in support of the project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 900-554-216-HOBSTREET. This is to erect a new four-story, unit residential dwelling. Violation, Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Eric Zacherson, who is the architect for the project, along with Fernando Delfier, who is the project owner. Madam Chair, this project is located just outside of Central Square in what I guess is referred to as the Paris Flats section of East Boston. This site previously contained an existing, a pre-existing three-family dwelling that was ordered condemned by the city of Boston, and has been since torn down. Our proposal is to replace the building that previously existed with a four-unit dwelling, which is pretty much in scale with the surrounding neighborhood. There are a number of multifamily dwellings along this section of Harve Street. Our proposal would include the four units with generous-sized units, all two bedrooms with about 1,000 square feet, a little bit over for each of those units. With respect to the relief that would be necessary for this proposal, this does sit within the 3F-2,000 district, therefore, a four-family as a multifamily would require relief. We do have sufficient minimum lot size, sufficient frontage, as well as the, a sufficient modal setback. Our rear yard is proposed at 30 feet as well, which would also be compliant with Article 53. We do require relief on the side yard. There was an existing condition that we are, continue to maintain. It was set at 1.1 feet on the right side. So we are continuing to maintain that setback. However, we will have sufficient side yard on the left side. With respect to the FAR, 1.0 is allowed in 3F-2,000 district. Our proposed FAR would be 2.47. However, I would indicate that the previous building that sat on this site was also non-conforming with respect to the FAR. Our building would sit at 38 feet tall at four stories. We are proposing to setback that fourth story slightly to keep a consistent height experience along that side of Hobbs Street with the other three-family, three-story buildings that exist. But the total height of the building, as we said, would be 38 feet. There is no roof deck proposed or headhouse for this project. That was a specific request by the neighborhood, and we've agreed to honor that as well. With respect to the parking, the previous structure at three units did not have any parking. And therefore, under the code, if we are rebuilding what was previously there, we're only required to provide the parking for the additional unit. The neighborhood did have a response to that. They'd prefer to see no curb cut in front of this building, and therefore, we're not providing any parking on-site. It would actually change the design substantially, this building. So we're requesting a variance for that. This project was filed before October 18, 2018, and therefore is not subject to the current IPod that's ongoing in East Boston. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The property, what is the side? I cannot read the plan, but the side lot line, looking at the property, what's the distance to the side lot line to side yard?
I believe it's at 1.1 on the plan. 1.1 feet.
Was that the existing building?
Existing building is, the page before it actually shows it slightly closer towards the front. Yeah, the pre-existing building was actually almost on the property line.
I wonder how they did maintenance repairs. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate. I have one question. Are the utilities in each unit?
Yes.
So there's no common utility space?
There is not.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
This is intended for homeownership as well. So each of the units would have their own utility.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure there was access. Okay. Drawing's ready.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairs, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record of support. This project had the support from the Neighborhood Association or from the abutters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The Maverick Central Association is also in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're back for our vote.
Calling a last case for 10:30. Calling BOA 906-215-41-GLADSTONESTREET. This was to erect a three-unit residential dwelling with four parking vehicles. Violation is Article 53, Section 8. A 3F is forbidden in the 2F-7,000 sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, again with me, Trea Lorreya of Joy Street Design, the architect for this project. Madam Chair, this is a property located in the Orient Heights section of East Boston, specifically a 2F-7,000 district. The existing lot is 7,500 square feet. And knowing some of the sensitivity in that neighborhood with respect to development, this project was intentionally designed to be dimensionally as-of-right with respect to the 2F-7,000 district. So all items, including lot size, frontage, height, setback, et cetera, have all been met. The only variance that we're requesting is the use at three-family as opposed to two-family was allowed. I would point out that eight of the homes immediately surrounding this are all three-family dwellings. Five of them do not have any off-street parking. In order to mitigate or address the condition with respect to the proposed use that we're looking to have approved here, we've included four parking spaces as opposed to three, which would be required in the zoning code. This property is setback substantially from the rear property line. We do understand that the abutter, who lives to the rear and is quite elevated on Orient Ave, had some-
Was this addressed before us in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. I've not presented this.
Okay.
We are setting the rear yard back almost 70 feet. The requirement is 45 feet under the code. So we're doing everything we can to preserve as much space in between our proposed building and the rear setback and the rear property line. In addition, as I said, we are proposing four parking spaces, one in excess of the number that's required under the code. We are providing over 700 more square feet of open space than would be required under the code as well. The unit sizes are very generous. These are all three-bedroom units, which again is something we hear often in the Orient Heights neighborhood as a type of developments that are being composed. This would certainly be adaptable or be able to accommodate families at about 1,200 square feet for the smallest, up to about 1,370 square feet for the largest. So happy to answer any questions on this one.
Is there parking being provided?
Four spaces, correct.
So I'm looking at this last rendering. Perhaps there's a better one I can look at to see how the parking will work?
I think the site plan lays it out better, Madam Chair. It does show the driveway on the right side with the four parking spaces to the rear.
Okay. Who are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The developer addressed the concern of the abutters, and there was no opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling 1130 cases. Calling BOA 899-705-54-BAITMANSTREET.
Excuse me, excuse me. Didn't you call for any of the others? Did you call for Gladstone Street?
Can I say?
I didn't hear you call.
I'm sorry. I thought I asked people in support and opposition.
Well, I am in opposition.
Okay.
I wanted to go on record, but I am in opposition.
Oh, you did not hear me then, I'm sorry.
That's why I sat in the front, so that I could hear.
Oh, so please have it. Please tell us what your opposition is based on. We will reopen the case for Gladstone.
Gladstone Street.
Yes, put your name. Excuse me, ma'am. Sit behind the mic. Put your name and address on the record, and tell us what your opposition is based on.
Madam Chair, my name is Marie Vitaglione. I live at 56th Orient Avenue, and I am an abutter to 41 Gladstone Street. A piece of property that was numbered 41 out of the blue. This has been a beautiful piece of property, bearing number 45, I believe. And here I have photographs of it, which is a lot of land. If she may come and get these, please. And this piece of property that they are requesting will be totally out of sync with the rest of the property on Gladstone Street and Orient Avenue. And as they say, that there are three-family houses, many three-family houses on Gladstone Street. That is not so. There are many, many one- and two-family houses which outweigh any three-family houses. I am vehemently opposed to this property going up. Number one, parking places are at a priority in East Boston, and especially on Gladstone Street, where they park on both sides. It is now a one-way street. And they are proposing more families go up, more homes go up close to the back of the Don Arion home, which I'm opposed to that also. We are being inundated with homes on Gladstone Street. And even though I don't live there, I know it's a problem for the people who do live there because they say four parking places. I have a neighbor who has a two-family house. And would you say a two-family house would require four parking places? No. Do you know how many cars they have? They have seven cars. I'd never park on the street because I happen to be one of the lucky ones who has a driveway with a three-car garage.
Besides parking, what is your other concern about this?
My other concern is that this piece of property is too small to build on. And also, it will not go in concert with the rest of Gladstone Street and the property on Gladstone Street. This was an Episcopal home years ago, built, and if I recall, it was considered to be put in the historic annals of East Boston. We are being inundated by Gerakalas, or whatever his name is, if he's here. I'd like to make him stand, with his projects here in East Boston. And I have just about had it with them.
So besides parking and the lot being too small, what else?
The view from my house. If you look at this, the view from my house, I can see all the way to the airport, which I love. And also...
Okay. Anything else besides parking, the small lot, and the view?
And it would also impose on the existing home that's there. He would be building right next to it, and it would also hamper their view from the rest of the, from the side of the house. And also, the sunshine. We love sunshine, don't we? Well, Mr. Gerakalas wants to put up a three-family home right next to this house. Where will the sunshine go? Down to Chelsea Street?
So, okay, parking, the lot is too small, the view, the imposition on the existing home. I think you've covered everything. Anything else?
Well, they're a problem. Not that I can think of right now.
Okay.
Are there any more abutters from Gladstone Street?
Thank you. Okay, please. Why were you guys sitting when I asked for opposition?
We were both sitting right here.
Oh. So please, please, ma'am, have a seat and let your neighbor speak for a minute. So please, give us new information.
My name's Jane Riley. I live at 45 Gladstone Street. My main concern is the proximity of the new residents because 45 is set to the right side of the property line. And to the right side of 41 is a driveway that's not leveled with property. So it leaves just a small space for that property to be built. Presumably, it will be very close to the existing home at 45. I'm not sure what the zoning is for how much space needs to be between the two homes. But because our home is set to the right side of the property, it's closer to 41 than to the other side. I have a six-year-old daughter, and so my other concern is safety, especially during construction. We've been living there for just over a year now. And during that time, that property was sold and has not been maintained. Up until last week, when my husband and the landscapers for our property took care of that, the grass was about two feet high on that property.
So any other concerns?
Mainly safety during construction and privacy and the space between the two homes.
Okay, thank you. Now, counselor, you will confirm that this building is built as-of-right dimensionally?
That's correct.
Side yards, rear yards, front yard, height?
This is a separately assessed individual lot that has 7,500 square feet, which is 500 feet, 500 square feet in excess of what the zoning code requires. Our setbacks are required to be at 10 feet on each of the side yards. One is at 10 and one is at 13 and a half feet.
And your height, yeah?
The height of our building is 35 feet to the max, the point, in three stories. So while I did hear all of these concerns in the community process, we stress the fact that this building could be built as a matter of right regardless. So those issues relative to light, shadow, proximity, we've addressed. I don't necessarily know that we can address other non-conformities of other properties. So our proposal, again, proposing to do a three-story building, would be mitigated by the fact that we'd add additional parking. And I will, for the record, state that we did investigate the five homes to the right of this are all three families, and they'll be across the street as well.
And it sounds like you will, I'm assuming the property owner and the construction crew will be in touch with the neighbors so that all safety guidelines will be met during construction?
Yeah, so regardless of relief, the construction management plan is required regardless of what we're building there. So all of that will be incorporated. And one of the things that we did commit to as well was the preservation of the wall that's in front of the building, the landscaping that exists there.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, all of that was commitments that we made during the community process as well.
So may I have a reconfirmation of the vote, please?
Once again, I'll make a motion for approval of BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, go to the 1130 rediscussions. Calling BOA 899-705-54-BAITMANSTREET. This was to extend living space to the basement for unit 1. The violation is Article 69, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Did you-
Name and address for the record, please.
Cameron Merrill, 100 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Have you guys sorted everything out?
We attempted to. Unfortunately, despite attempting to schedule arbitration twice, we were unable to resolve issues. The issue expanded beyond what Ms. Gagarin had attempted to do. She is willing to pay for all of the costs to make this code compliant and move the shut-offs on her own. This would be the water and gas shut-offs. She's just trying to sell this property and move on, and this is prohibited.
So what is Section 69-9? Excuse me, Mark. Sorry. 69-9. Is that the extension into the basement?
It's the floor-to-air ratio is excessive.
FAR?
The only thing the violation-
105 square feet.
105 square feet, okay.
Been in existence since at least 2003.
So is this the third or the fourth time you've been in front of us?
This is the second time before the full board, one time at 10:10.
Okay, so it's, okay. I don't know why I feel like I've seen you guys more frequently than that. So this is a request for extension into the basement of 105 square feet. Plans are adequate?
Plans are de minimis. The issue was, as I recall, the access to the gas and water.
Right, all of these units were deeded out with common easements to the gas. But now that that's-
So I didn't quite hear you. What is the proposed solution?
So Ms. Gagarin will work with ISD to find a solution to moving these shut-offs into either exterior for gas, if necessary, or into common areas to resolve this issue.
So there won't be a building code violation?
Exactly. We tried to share these costs, that wasn't acceptable, so she just-
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion for approval on the zoning relief.
That's not the only issue here. We submitted-
Wait a second. You know, this has been going on.
It doesn't matter that this has been going on. We have, no, excuse me. You allow everyone else here to speak.
Hold on.
We submitted another letter to you. We can access our furnaces.
Will you stop? If you have issues, put them on the record.
You didn't give us an opportunity to do that.
But I want to know what your resolution is. Because-
This is not on us to, this, you already stated.
Can you go to the podium? Put your name and address on the record, and be brief on what your concerns are. Because this is, we've seen this. I've not, in the years I've sat on this board, seen neighbors in such disarray. So please, for, put your-
My name is Brandon Williams. My wife's name is Nidia Valencia. We live at 54 Bateman Street, Unit 2. Our issues are as follows. The main water shut-off is specifically located in Ms. Gagarin's unit, behind a wall, behind a closed door, in the basement, behind another closed door. Our gas meter is in the same spot. The space between the walls in the basement are less than 18 feet from the, 18 inches, I'm sorry, from the furnaces, which means we can't either service or remove our furnaces if we'd like. We submitted a quote from a plumber for the work. If we just want to remove our hot water heater, it's an additional $2,300 to us just to replace our water heater because we'd have to remove hers. It's an additional $4,500 to do any maintenance or remove our furnace because the walls in the unit are so close. The other issue we have is that the city has already stated that no permit was ever pulled when these condos were deeded, which means they never had the right to deed it to anyone. Secondly, when we were here the last time, Secondly, when we were here the last time, Mr. Ehrlich stated that the drawings weren't adequate due to where the placement of, of the, um, of the utilities. You guys, everyone else that's come up here, do you have access to utilities?
We're done. Okay, so this, this was inappropriately converted into condos. Both of you guys inadvertently bought units there?
We didn't buy it, she bought it, and now that we know that there's an issue...
Okay, now, okay, now, we, all that's in front of us today is the extension of one hundred square foot in the basement.
Because you haven't allowed us to go, you haven't allowed us to add anything else.
No, this is done, okay.
Every time, we tell you four, this...
Can I have a motion?
Uh, excuse me, uh, you're gonna, my motion is gonna deal with your issue. I wish you would listen to it, uh, as opposed to interrupting.
But that doesn't address all the issues.
Excuse me, it does. I'm gonna make a motion that there will be no building code relief granted, which means that, that all of this stuff, issues will have to be sorted out, so that the access to the utilities is done in compliance with the code.
Okay, so Mr., Mr. Ehrlich, the motion that you have on the table is approval for building code relief, with no building code relief.
That's correct.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You can take your disagreements somewhere else, but it's, this is our decision, okay?
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-one-zero-zero-one-six, Seventeenth Standard Street. This is to erect a new four-unit residential building on six thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet, vacant land with proposed five off-street parking, five garage parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty, section eight. A multifamily dwelling is a forbidden use. Article sixty, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, and Article sixty, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair members of the board. My name is Richard Marison, Attorney with the Business Address, three-fifty West Broadway South, Boston. Madam Chair members, this matter was deferred, uh, the first time, the previous time here before we allow for additional community process specifically for presentation due to River Street Civic Association, which did in fact occur. Uh, River Street Civic Association issued a letter of support on June twentieth. Uh, Madam Chair members, this is an application to erect a new four-unit residential building on the lot at Seventeenth Standard Street of Madison. This is a vacant lot, six thousand eight hundred eighty-two square feet. There will be five, uh, garage parking spaces, fully, uh, full-size residential spaces, uh, for the four units and grade two, uh, floors above of, uh, two units per floor, all two-bedroom units. Uh, there will be two twelve-hundred-seven square foot units, two eleven-hundred-forty-seven square foot units. Uh, the request through community process was that, uh, to, uh, be more sympathetic to the architectural style of the neighborhood, the originally designed flat roof be converted to a fish roof, uh, which has been done. This does not increase gross floor area or FAR because it is, uh, unfinished attic space. It does add to the height violation, uh, which is among the zoning code violations cited. This is a one F five-thousand district, which means that the multifamily dwelling is forbidden use. There is an FAR violation, a maximum FAR in the sub-district is point six. This building would come in, uh, somewhere between point seven-five and eight. It is a two-and-a-half-story, thirty-five-foot district. This building will be three-and-a-half stories because of ground floor parking. It would rise to a maximum height of, uh, forty feet, ten-and-a-half inches at the roof peak. There are violations cited for insufficient usable open space, a front yard insufficiency, and a rear yard insufficiency. Does anyone take any questions?
So front yard is modal?
Uh, front yard is, uh, is, is, uh, the required front yard is twenty, uh, which is about modal here, so it's probably not exactly the, meaning the, uh, modal requirement.
And tell us how the parking is, uh, works, because I see a front elevation and, um...
So there's a garage entrance on the, uh, side, uh, as one's looking at the building, it's, uh, 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 right side of the garage.
Yeah, I see the right elevation.
And, uh, the parking spaces, there's one H P, uh, eight-and-a-half by twenty, uh, foot space, uh, next to that, two other full-size parking spaces, and then there's...
So then my question is, if I look at the front elevation, option A, previous page, is that a garage door, too?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke, I'm sorry, you're, you're, yes, uh, there is...
Because it looks like there's one there and one at the right elevation.
Yeah, and I suspect that the B R A would, would, uh, probably, uh, change that in the design review. It, it is how it's currently planned, but I suspect it won't survive in the design review at, uh...
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Growing through.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Solason with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We've had an abutment meeting for this project. It's also gone through the River Street Association a couple of times, and the River Street Association finally submitted their letter of support after working with the developers, and thus the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services supports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Do, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDAs design review.
Second.
And that's for appropriate elimination of that front garage door.
Special attention to the elimination of the front garage door.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA seven-nine-three-nine-zero-three-twenty-four Acadia Park. This is a build-in addition and change, like from a three-family to a six-family and consolidate lots, and add five off-street parking. The vehicle, violations, Article nine, section one, extension, existing use of the three families forbidden in the two-F five-thousand sub-district. Article sixty-five, section eight, MFR is forbidden to use in the two-F five-thousand sub-district. Article sixty-five, section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Richard Marison, Attorney with the Business Address, three-fifty West Broadway South, Boston. I'm joined by James Christopher, RCA, LLC, Senior Project Architect. James Wright is James' landlord, our client and the owner of the apartment. Madam Chair members, this matter was deferred a number of times, the reason being is that, uh, we were in conversation with the Department of Neighborhood Development. Uh, the existing building here is a multifamily dwelling by client. The proposal is to add a three-unit addition to the flooding parcel, but also it's that parcel does have the E and D restriction on it. Uh, we have, uh, gone through a community process, in the process of conversation with the Department of Neighborhood Development, which has resulted in support of both community and E and D for this to go forward, have approved by the Board of Appeal, uh, which would provide that two of the additional three dwelling units, uh, being created here would be affordable units. One would be, uh, offering eighty percent of AMI, one would offer a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. These would be, uh, condominium units for sale, as would the other four units of the building. Uh, with that being said, uh, the, uh, zoning district here is two-F five-thousand. The existing buildings are pre-existing non-conform use, uh, therefore there is a violation for the extension of this, uh, to a six-family dwelling. There's an FAR violation, the maximum FAR in the sub-district is point five. Uh, here we're coming in with an FAR of, uh, one point four-five. The, uh, applications also cited for excessive building height, that as the board can imagine, the two-F five-thousand, uh, maximum height is two-and-a-half stories and thirty-five feet. The existing building is a full-three-story building, it's not conforming. The addition would match the existing building, which means that, uh, the addition, uh, also would be non-conforming in three stories. It is in fact only thirty-three feet, four inches in height, however, with thirty-five foot limit in the sub-district. There's a front yard insufficiency, again, uh, there's an existing essentially modal front yard setback of the existing building, which is being matched by the addition, including the inset's around the bay, uh, to make for uniform front facade. Side yard violation that is cited, uh, accrues to the existing building. This is an existing condition, which is being cited simply because the building, uh, is being extended further, the violation of rear yard insufficiency also attributable to the existing structure, the addition, uh, actually conforms to the rear yard setback is far against the article. Uh, in addition to the, uh, three units that are being created to, which are affordable, five off-street parking spaces, uh, being created on the, uh, on the E and D lot, you can call that as well.
So the parking would, um, entrance would be off of Dixon?
Off of Dixon, correct.
Okay, and what, um, you may have gone over this, but what are the bedroom counts and the average square feet?
Uh, the average script, uh, script footage range is from seven-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet, uh, the smallest unit's a fourteen-hundred-and-five square feet, Madam Chair, and all of the units are two-bedroom, one-bedroom.
Uh, hold the question, Mr. Ehrlich.
Growing through.
Any questions from the board? Um, and do you have a handicap unit in here? Because it looks like there's no elevator in the building.
Yes.
On the, on the ground floor?
Right. It'd be unit two.
Unit two, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Qualify from Mayor's of Neighborhood Services, would like to record in support. The applicant has went through an extensive community process, which included three-year abutment meeting and two meetings with the local civic group, and through that conversation, they have agreed to provide two affordable units and also, uh, increasing homeownership and keepers at, as condo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Donald Wright with the Department of Neighborhood Development, who support the proposed project.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Did, did you, did you meet with Carol?
I'm sorry?
Did you meet with Carol?
Yes.
Go. Sorry.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve continued BPDAs design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I look like gonna say something.
I just felt, I mean, obviously, the Department, the Department of Neighborhood Development's restriction, I didn't know the board might to approve, would advise of the two affordable units.
Isn't that in any, it's not, um, memorialized anyplace else?
No.
No?
It's, it's, it's an agreement that we have with D and D, that they'll pay the board to sign, so it probably should be...
Will there, will there be?
Yes.
And has the units been selected?
Yes.
Okay, so we should put the units, uh, Mr. Ehrlich, uh, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, so let's add the affordable units and the number, the unit number.
Which, can you say once again the unit numbers that will be affordable?
Yes, I'm gonna let my client do that. One is, uh, one and, one and three. Unit one and unit three.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Um, so, I need a new motion.
Uh, motion would be, um, to approve, uh, with BPDAs design review, with the proviso that units one and three be deemed affordable.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA nine-one-four-zero-three-five-seven Parkway Street. Companion case, BOA nine-one-four-zero-three-zero-five Parkway Street.
I am...
This is for Seven Parkway, this is to construct new two-family dwelling on a new subdivided lot created by subdividing Five Parkway Street, the five thousand seven hundred and two square feet into two lots. The new lot is, lot is for Seven Parkway, which will, which shall consist of three thousand six hundred and ninety square feet and the remaining two thousand twelve square feet for Five Parkway Street. The violation is Article ten, section one, limitation of accessory uses. Article twenty-nine, section four, this is in a G pod, green, a green belt, uh, protection overlay district. The Article sixty, section nine, lot frontage requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the side yard requirement is insufficient, and Article sixty, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. This is for Five Parkway. This is a subdivided existing Five Parkway, five thousand seven oh two square foot lot, the two thousand twelve square foot lot for Five Parkway, and three thousand six ninety for Seven Parkway Lot Two. For new construction of a new two-family dwelling, no work to be done for Five Parkway Street. The violation is Article sixty, section thirty-seven, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, lot size for dwelling units is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article sixty, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney for Small, from the Business Address, uh, two-one-Dopson Road, Renton, Mass. With me today, to my left, is the architect for the project, Mr. Ezekiah Pratt, and to my right, is the owner of the property, Andre McCrack. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking relief to subdivide the parcel, the two parcels, and erect a two-family dwelling, um, at number seven Parkway, and that lot will consist of, uh, three thousand six hundred and ninety square feet of land.
So I'm sorry, number seven is three thousand square feet of land?
Three thousand six hundred and ninety square feet of land, and the existing one-family dwelling on the property will remain, and there's two thousand twelve square feet of land for that. Subdividing the property and erecting a two-family dwelling at seven.
On, on number seven.
On number seven.
And what's happened, number five?
Number five is a total gut rehab.
Gut rehab of a one-family?
Of a one-family dwelling, that's correct.
And what's the square footage on that?
Nine hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Nine hundred and twenty-five square feet.
It's a very, it's a very small existing property, yep.
Okay.
So, uh, the zoning sub-district is multifamily residential.
So basically, um, the lot was about five thousand square feet.
Five thousand seven hundred and twenty, yeah.
You're, you're chopping it up into one very tiny lot.
The existing at two thousand twelve square feet.
Okay.
And then the number seven is gonna be three thousand six hundred and ninety square feet.
Okay, so that's the result, that's, um, so the, the, at number seven, is that a two-family all, or is that a one-family?
Number seven is proposed to be a two-family dwelling.
Number seven is two-family, and number five is a one-family.
Is a one.
And it's gonna stay as a one?
It's gonna stay as a one.
Okay. Okay. So the fact that it's staying as a one, does that change any of the violations, um, that, that have been cited for you, for this property?
Uh, no.
No?
They're all, most, most of them are pre-existing non-conform.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, for example, the off-street parking, um, there is currently none, and we're proposing none for the existing. Um, the rear yard setback on that is, uh, requirement is thirty feet. We have five. The lot size, obviously, its requirement is two thousand, we're at two-twelve, which we think was cited erroneously. The FAR also, um, we think was cited erroneously because the requirement is zero-point-nine, and we're coming in at point four-five.
Okay.
Um, the open space requirement is three hundred squares, three hundred square feet, and we're coming in at a hundred and fifty square feet. So that's a new violation with regards to the open space.
And tell us the number seven, are you providing, what's the, what's the square feet of the dwelling unit?
Sorry, the property?
Of the, of the dwelling unit?
Each, each unit will be twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve hundred square feet, okay, and any parking at number seven?
Yes. Two off-street parking spaces.
In the rear yard or in the garage?
Uh... Side yard.
Side yard, okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Growing through.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Solason with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on, we'd like to go on rec, on record as support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDAs design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling BOA nine-zero-nine-seven-nine-zero, thirty-three Mayfield Street. This is a change...
Oh, oh, sorry, Mark?
Yes?
I've got your request from board members to take a five-minute break, so we will take a five-minute break and reconvene at, um, one-ten, one-ten on the, on the nose, okay?
There's one-ten.
I'm sorry, then, oh, it's one-ten, one-fifteen on the nose. I'm sorry, then, oh, it's one ten, one fifteen on the nose. Okay.
Unit one?
Yep.
Here's a unit one, is currently twelve hundred forty-seven square feet. Unit two is fourteen twelve. Proposed third unit is will be nine hundred and thirty-five square feet.
Okay, and-
You've got to community process.
So, so, um, this is almost a tripe, a typical triple-decker, decker then?
Yes.
With a picture. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody?
Why was this deferred? It was deferred because it was supposed to be on the agenda for the 21st, but the hearing was canceled, and we had to go back and meet with Columbia Seven Hill, and we did both.
Okay, excellent. You're here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was no Butters meeting held for this applicant. They met with the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association, receiving their support. We'd like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 821-297-10 Midland Street.
Your presentations are very tight. Thank you.
This is a vertical two-story addition, change occupancy from a two to a three-family. The violation's Article 65, Section 8, three-family is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the FAR is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good, uh, good afternoon, your afternoon. Peter Vanco, architect. Vanco Studio Architects.
I'm Jennifer Lamb.
Please go. What's being proposed?
Yes, um, so we are proposing the raising of one level of a building. It's currently a two-story structure, it's a single family. We want to convert this to a two-family. We are going to maintain the existing footprint, raising building one story. It aligns with the Met of Butters roofline.
Sorry, so this is a change of occupancy from a one, two, or two?
It is indeed.
Oh, because it's advertised two, two, or three? Was it ever a two? No?
It was not.
Okay, so this is a one, two, or two?
It's a one, two, or two. Thank you for clarifying. Um, we are working with an existing footprint, and, um, so the two units are going to be, unit one is seventeen hundred square feet, unit two is two thousand square feet. And we get a lot of that square footage by going down into our basement. We keep a nice tight footprint, and that's a lot of where attributable FAR group is to, but we're not necessarily going outside. If you look at page two in the pack that I, I should, or that I have for you, we have a little manseur roof that's inclined with the neighborhood. It fits, it actually is replication of another house down the street. It all works together. I think that our neighborhood process proved through work with the neighbors that no one had any trouble studying.
So let's, let's just unpack this a little bit. Um, what is the required FAR, and what are you proposing?
Okay, so required FAR is point five. We're, we're going for a point nine five here. So we have a number of pre-existing violations. For one, the lot is too small even for the, the dwelling that's covered there.
So, a lot of those. So tell us about the extension into the basement.
Yeah, the extension basically will require underpinning and digging down.
Okay, so you'll meet the floor-to-ceiling height?
Absolutely, we will.
Okay. And window wells, or how is that going to work?
Yes, that is correct. There are window wells that will be occurring, and it's mostly in the rear of the building, so it's not necessarily visible from the front of the street. You won't really see anything. If you look at the garden plan, there's a bedroom there in the back, and a window well is associated with that bath. That bedroom is entirely toward the rear of the lot.
And is there a second means of egress?
There will, this will be sprinkled with an MPA thirteen R sprinkler system, so it will be a single means of egress.
Okay. Um, let's see, roof deck. Tell us about that roof deck.
Yes, roof deck is a deeded roof deck to topmost unit, access via a head, a headhouse.
Mr. Ehrlich, I'm going to have you handle that. Um, how are the plans?
This is a rather large headhouse.
Well, one, make sure there was full height, one, make sure it was up to code, easy to get there with things that, for maintenance. This will be under occupied, probably topmost unit, likely.
It will be accessed by the, the top unit only.
By the top unit, yeah.
All right, because, I mean, this board has a sort of history of being reluctant to approve big headhouses that change the rooflines of, of buildings, and one possibly, if you're not doing a hatch, one possibility is having a sloping headhouse.
Absolutely, absolutely. The only thing that I can think of that I think that makes this a little more acceptable, on the elevation sheet, the bottom right elevation is a side elevation. That headhouse is probably thirty feet from the side.
And that's good. I mean, it's not sitting at the front, so, from, but, but I think still, I mean, look, it kind of stands out as quite sizable and roomy.
Yes, for, for such a beautiful building, you know, you just want to maintain that, that sleekness to it without that, um-
Absolutely.
That oversized-
Sure, and we could certainly slope the top, and that's something we could work with, presumably with the BPDA, that's what we have to do.
And the parking is, um, how many spaces?
We have three spaces in the rear.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This one threw a pretty robust community process. There were several Butters meetings held, where the applicant worked with the neighbors to bring down the unit count and accommodate a lot of the design concerns, which were met. It also went before the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association at their planning meeting. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
I'm Brian Gengemi, I'm the owner occupant at 254 East Cottage Street, and I'm speaking behalf of both the condo trust and neighbors who weren't able to be here.
So please, a bullet point for us, what your concerns are.
Yeah, just, just to preface, within thirty seconds, just to Mr. Baker's representative, you know, right down the street, we've got seventeen luxury units happening at Pleasant Street. Just today, the corner of Dorchester Avenue, Cottage Street, it's the groundbreaking for what's converting from a Dorchester small market and pub to a thirty-eight, uh, unit building. That's going to be five stories. So when we think about height and the changes that are happening to the neighborhood, I'm particularly concerned with the points raised by Mr. Ehrlich about the imposing height and the nature of this roof deck on the top, and this is a concern to a lot of other, uh, owner, owners within the immediate vicinity, who expressed letters of concern in the, in what was set as a date in February. So that, that's one primary area concern. And other than that, I just add that, yeah, it's, it's, it's again, with hundreds of units coming up in South Bay, with hundreds of units in Glover's Corner, we just have to be very mindful within the tight quarter, that is, this particular lot can, the extent to which can be built out. So I just ask that those matters be considered. And then, more broadly, again, you know, who, who within the occupancy of prospective tenants and/or buyers is in the mix. I, as a, you know, fourteen year homeowner in the neighborhood, have always ensured that people who are, you know, working folks in the community can access affordability and whatnot. And the gentleman that spoke earlier, Mr. Minor Perez from the New England Regional Carpenters, one of my most recent tenants, was a, a young lady who was an apprentice with Suffolk Construction. A prospective tenant I have in the, in fall, will be a social worker, the, the home for little wanderers. So it's just consideration of these macro-level changes, but very specifically, the imposing nature of this is something that we as neighbors are greatly concerned about, and whatever processes were referenced with these neighborhood associations, we weren't in the loop, and just wanted to make that statement, put it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition where there's some, okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project with BPDA design review with particular attention to the headhouses, and try to minimize the, the impact from a design perspective.
Can we put it more precisely with a slanted hedge, headhouse, or something like that? What do you think?
Man, I think, Jeff, I, you know, we-
I'll take care of it.
You take care of it.
Okay. So, so, okay, so you know what, you know what our concerns are, so just make sure when you go through design review. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 821-302-22 Edison Green. This is a complete renovation of a three-family dwelling, extend living space in the basement, and third-floor vertical addition. Violations, Article 65, Section 9, FAR is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, again, Peter Vanco, Vanco Studio Architects. I'll contact-
What else is being proposed?
Yes, so, uh, we are proposing the conversion of a two-family building to a three-family dwelling. Uh, we're maintaining the existing footprint. We are demolishing the gable of this building. Nineteen twenties, um, two-and-a-half-story building, and we are proposing a flat-roofed, um, three-story, triple-decker style building like you would see throughout this neighborhood. It's actually a copy of our, of our neighbor's building directly to our left. Um, aesthetically, we're aligned with the other flat-roofed buildings in the area. Massive works out, everything shifts out. We are maintaining the existing parking. We were unable to find another parking space for that third unit. We worked it out with the neighborhood, we don't think this happens to be an issue. Now, we almost make FAR here, so our massing really is in line with, I think, the intentions of the zoning code.
So either rear yard, it's a, uh, because of existing non-conformity, right?
That is correct.
And then, um, what's your FAR going from?
It is going from one point three-two to one point three-three, one one hundred percent.
Okay. And tell us about that extension into the basement.
Extension of the basement is going to be digging down with underpinnings, digging it out to full nine-foot finished ceiling.
Okay. And so, um, how's that mass, the bedroom, going to work? Is that leading out to a deck? What's leading out to?
That's leading out to a window well. So that would be a, a, probably a permeable paper in the bottom of that window well. And we like the sizes large enough, not just for egress purposes, but that they're actually usable outdoor space for that, that.
Okay. Hmm, that's interesting. Okay, and the roof deck?
The roof deck here is accessed by a sloping headhouse. It is deeded to the topmost unit.
So maybe we should just make a statement here, and just say, please try to minimize the headhouses in your design?
Sure.
Okay?
Sure. Madam Chair, we're making headway here. It's got a sloping roof on this one.
I know, I know.
Maybe by the next time, maybe by the next time we'll have a hatch.
Well, next time we'll have a hatch. Okay, okay.
I, I too would prefer hatches, however, we had a stair, the existing stair utilization, that this stair wrapped a number of times. I don't know of a, a four-by-eight roof hatch.
Okay.
A four-by-eight would-
So how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine. We're, we're working on Mr. Vanco here.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. There was a Butters meeting held on-site, and they also met with the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association. We would just like to reiterate the concern of the headhouse and ask for continued BPDA design review, but go on record in support this time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Headhouse?
Yeah, Brian Gengemi, 254 East Cottage Street. Um, just a, a very brief statement and a rebuttal to Mr. Lost your name from Frank Baker's office. Um, again, within the last five minutes, we've approved an additional three units in the neighborhood. We've got hundreds of units currently being developed. And the question I have for the representative from Mr. Baker's office is, you know, as I'm and other neighbors are trying to, uh, uh, keep up with affordable, accessible housing stock, for the utility workers at EverSource, for the folks who work with Suffolk Construction, who are members of New England Regional Council of Carpenters, do you want to continue to advance this type of development as, in a manner that accelerates what I fear will be more displacements that- as, in, in a manner that accelerates what I fear will be more displacements that we're experiencing in the neighborhood? That said, I conclude my remarks, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve continued BPD design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any concern about headhouse, um...
Well, again, this one, this one is better, I, but Jeff knows that we are looking to get, have the absolute minimum and be functional.
Okay, so there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, but that provides it.
Calling BOA eight-three-five-seven-nine-two, three-to-five, South Whitney Street. This is a demolishing existing structure, erect a new five-story building with eight residential units and seven parking spaces. It violates Article fifty-nine, section fifteen, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden use. Article fifty-nine, section thirty-seven, our street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Frank Drago, Drago and Scott. Opened up, this is fifteen draw streets with me, I have an R T D some part, and you have a technical project, you're allowed to develop, uh, three, uh, South Whitney, and we have some material here, for the floor.
More trees?
As was mentioned, the proposal before you is to demolish an existing and abandoned and violated six-unit building into a rest of five-story building with eight units and seven parking spaces. The existing structure has been abandoned for a number of years, was a problem property, subject to a number of break-ins. I just think it's important to go over sort of timeline of changes and modifications that we've made on this project.
Our baseline is the zoning code, so I don't really care where you start off, just talk, talk from the baseline.
So, right now, this project is down from nine units to eight units, and so what you see before you is a condominium proposal with those modifications. We were able to bring the violations down to just two, one being the use, so in multifamily, it is community commercial area zone, so it does trigger a violation.
So this is a CC?
It is, although there's, wouldn't know it because it's all residential all around.
Yeah, and that happens.
Um, and second is parking, eight, eight parking spaces will be required, and we are proposing seven, although currently the building has no parking in the lot right now for six units. I can go over the unit count and layout?
Oh, yes, but tell us how the parking is going to work?
So, the parking will consist of two, um, exterior spots in the rear of the property, and then the rest of the parking will be housed inside with a cantilever back.
Okay.
And it's a stacker system, so we'll be utilizing a semi-automated parking system, so it's not a typical stacker, we have to pull a car out to access another car, uh, so within the building will be five spaces, and then will be two service spaces.
Okay, and you look like you have decks, um, yes, give us, um, the bedroom size, the size and the count.
So, um, the first floor unit poses a parking, but also the lower level is a duplex unit, that's the only one that's a duplex unit. So it's seven hu, it's about a little over sixteen hundred square foot between the first floor and the second floor. That's floor one, as you go up to floor two, and that's a two-bed, two-bath, two-bed, two-and-a-half bath. Unit two is an eleven hundred square foot, two-bed, two-bath, and then we go up to three, five floors are all two-bed, uh, two, I'm sorry, units three, five, and seven, eleven hundred square foot, two-bed, two-bath, and then units four, six, and eight, nine hundred fifteen square foot, two-bed, one-bath.
So it looks like the market is demanding two beds, because that's practically all we've seen in the past few year, here.
We actually have three beds, they're in working with the community, they asked us to remove all three bedroom units.
So they won't dump on families of the neighborhood, huh?
We worked for about a year on this project and modifications, including bringing down the FAR, taking a story off the top of the building, we're now at fifty-five feet, so we need the height requirement, so, yeah.
Okay, and there's no roof deck? And, um, so how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are accurate.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question, so you said you proposed three bedrooms and they pushed back to give you two bedrooms?
Correct.
And, and was that the first round of pushback?
Uh, no, they, it was probably the second round was pushed back, the first was the height, um, because of blocks, they would be turned above Fitzgerald Park in the rear, they didn't include site, you from the park, we took that off, then it fell, there's two decks that were already about rental college students, so we committed to condo project, and we also bought the supportive of Mission Hill rental.
Yeah, because I too, I'm in, I'm with, I support what the, what the chair spoke about, I don't understand what we're going to do with the third.
We did propose it, but...
Yeah, no, I understand.
Is, is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Shanice Pimcel from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We appreciate the applicant's cooperation and collaboration with the neighborhood, with Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. In response to the concerns of the community, the applicant has agreed to restrict the sale of all eight condominiums to owner occupants, modify the project to move the roof line and all roof elements to under fifty-five feet, not build a roof deck, restrict parking spaces to occupant users only, and that cannot be rented to other users, and agreed to provide contextual elements of material and design details as the project proceeds. Following these terms stated and agreed upon, I would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is any, you're speaking in support or in opposition?
Yeah, in opposition.
Okay, so have I gotten everybody in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Go ahead, your turn.
Steve Schuman, uh, two South Whitney Street. I have no idea how they're going to construct this building. This is a very short street.
Okay, so can I just ask you, besides the construction issue, are you, is there anything about the proposal itself that you're in opposition to?
It's a, it's a very short street.
Okay.
And it's basically parking on one side of the street, and the rest of the street, there's enough room for one car to go up and down. Uh, it's certainly not a two-way street. I have no idea how, uh, trash car, cars, garbage trucks, emergency vehicles are going to be getting in and out of that street while the construction's going on. Possibly, I suppose, once it's built. It is a very short street, there's nothing on the south side of Tremont Street, this bit, the South Whitney Street's off the south side of Tremont Street, there's nothing on that street over three stories right now on the south side, so this would be a lot larger than any, any other buildings on that side of Tremont Street. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Uh, given this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPD design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, without proviso.
Calling KSB O A eight-six-six-five-eight-three-five-sixty, East Fifth Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family with four-car garage, a first and third-floor addition, side rear and roof decks, violations twenty-seven S. section five, this is in the South Boston I-Pod, Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, roof structure restriction, and Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, our street parking loading requirement maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Marco Pass, Pass, seventy-five Early Street, Austin, Mass, attorney for the applicant and the property owner, Samantha , the master seller, who has owned the owners of the property, uh, by On Point Capital, which is based in South Boston. Madam Chair, this is a proposal to change the occupancy of a existing three-family to a four-family by preserving the existing structure and adding one residential unit on the top floor of the carriage house garage in the rear of the property, which is existing, and adding parking spaces on the lower level of the garage. The zoning relief stop is quite minimal.
So why were you the fourth before?
I'm sorry?
Why were you the fourth before?
There were a number of other violations that were on the original refusal letter. We made substantial changes in response to the community review process, which began out that I've given you, we can walk through those changes, and as a result of that process and those changes that were made, the refusal letter was further pared down, so that now we only have the three items that are required to that.
So basically, you've extended the main bill, you're proposing to extend the main building to connect it to the carriage house, so it's not two buildings on the same lot?
Correct.
And then providing parking underground and a...
Parking at grade.
At grade, and a second uni, and a unit above.
And a unit above in the existing space, yes. And so, we believe that this project represents precisely the reason that the I-Pod was put into place, and that was preservation of existing structures in the context of the neighborhood, that's what's being done here, the original building is preserved, restored, and then brought back to a brand-new structure with a very modest addition on the connecting piece, the garage and the existing space, which is just that vacant. I'm happy to walk you through the ideas.
Okay, so just, I want to just make sure I understand the proposal?
Yes.
So what is the, um, size of that unit, um, on the carriage house?
Uh, second floor of the carriage house is part of thirteen hundred square feet.
Okay, um, then you're, you have the I-Pod, uh, you do not have roof structure because you've removed the roof deck?
No, we made modifications to the roof deck, so we still have a conditional use permit for the restricted roof structure regulation, yes.
So what's the size of the roof deck now?
Size of the roof deck, there, there are a number of different decks, Madam Chair, are you referring to the one on the top of the, um...
I guess since all of them trigger violations, I just need to know what the, what the viol, what's, what the trigger points are.
Um, the, the dimensions are approximately twelve by ten.
So it's, again, it looks like it's the top, the top roof deck that, that's, um, triggered it.
Yes.
Okay, and tell us about the parking, how many, how many spaces are you proposing?
There are four parking spaces in the garage, um, and because this is a pre-code structure, only the additional dwelling unit triggers the parking requirement, so technically we would be required to provide one-point-five parking spaces, but we're providing four, so there will be four spaces for the four units.
So, um...
And the parking issue as cited on the refusal letter is not with respect to the number of spaces, it's a maneuverability issue, because...
What I was going to get to, how, how, how are you proposing maneuverability here?
Um, there, there's a good amount of driveway, it's just the maneuverability issue, I think, is just related to getting into the last space in the garage, it's purely a design issue, but they're able to fit four cars in the garage, they satisfy the design requirements for parking spaces, um, but it's not a straight shot into the garage, and that's a maneuverability issue.
And how about loading, um, moving vans, et cetera, have ability to move back there?
There's no loading requirement for residential uses, I think they just, when they cited that provision of the code, it's, it's entitled to our street parking loading requirements, but there are no loading requirements for residential uses.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are accurate, the, the access to the roof deck is...
Uh, solely through that unit.
It's a hatch?
It's a hatch, correct, yes, very well proved.
Any other questions from the board?
And I have twenty-three letters of support.
Is anybody here to speak, I'm, I'm, just going to move ahead, in the meantime, you can give, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go ahead and recommend support, we just ask that they work, continue to work with the neighbors. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Chi Levin from Councilor Flynn's office. Uh, we'd like to go on record in opposition as multiple community meetings did not go well. Uh, neighbors and director Butters expressed concerns over the density with respect to the carriage house, the garage unit, parking impacts, and privacy with the decks. Gator Heaven Neighbor Association is also opposed. In addition, Rep. David Beal could not make it, he asked us to relay that he sent a letter to the board, and he's opposed as well.
I'm sorry, so it was density, privacy, what else?
Uh, parking impacts, and I mentioned that Gator Heaven Neighbor Association and Representative David Beal are opposed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Harvey Georgie's office, and we echo the statement, sentiments, excuse me, of Councilor Flynn's office, and we oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Samantha Bennett, speaking on behalf of Councilor Michael Flaherty. Uh, at this time, we acknowledge that the upper one has gone through an extensive community process, but we do not support any variances, however, we do defer to the board's judgment in, um, understanding and interpreting the zoning laws. Thank you.
My name is Lewis Neeland, I live at six-six-seven East Fourth Street. We've had three community meetings, and no one spoke in favor of this project. The developer purchased a three-family with a garage, the garage is right on my property line, which I don't believe they, they were informed.
So, so, so don't read to us, just talk to us, okay?
They, they purchased a small three-family, they, they want to blow up the back, extend the back, put a deck on the top, put a two-f, two, two-bedroom condo in the back, which is on my property line, and then connected the garage and the building with a shed with another deck on top of that, so... With, with the decks, we lose our privacy, they, they're going to look right down on me at Butters, including myself and all my, my neighbors, and also including the Gavin House, which is the home for recovery. So, I've been in my house for thirty-five years, um, I deserve some peace and quiet down the road when I retire. I'm a Vietnam veteran, I'm going to retire, I just wish that you would force this, this off, development down. I also have a hundred and ten signatures from neighbors against this project, and I also believe that you have like fifty-eight letters in opposition to this.
Thank you.
You want to submit that? We can.
Yes, please put that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Tim Lynch, and I'm here representing the Office of State Senator Nick Collins today. After hearing concerns from a Butters and the surrounding community, it is clear that this proposal raises serious concerns regarding height, density, and the overall impact on the quality of life in this neighborhood. It is for these reasons that I would like to be on record in opposition to this proposal. Furthermore, without the presence of economic hardship, I believe that the board should reject this proposal with prejudice. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, and please do not reach out, hesitate to reach out to the senator. Thank you.
Can you please submit his letter into the record? Say your name and address.
Hello, Rodrick Parrott, five-fifteen East Fifth Street, um, we live right next door. Their garage, current garage, uh, that's my property, that's my property line, they're going to put a deck on top of that, which will be basically eight to ten feet over my property, over my backyard, as I suppose. We're going to extend the third floor, which is, we can take it in my view, is anybody listening?
Yes, we're listening.
Okay, um...
Excuse me?
Well, no one's looking at me usually, where people are talking, people looking, that's fine.
You have to multitask up there.
We have to multitask, you have to forgive us.
All right, what great you said.
His deck looks over you, yeah, we're listening.
So, so, please continue, please continue.
They're going to extend the third floor, which is basically, that's my living room, the only window I have is on that side, it's going to extend past that, so now I'm going to be looking out the door. Then they're going to put a deck on top of that, so basically, my driveway would be basically...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so can you please respond to the density of the privacy and the parking issue?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, so, density as I understand it is generally with reference to floor area ratio, which in this sub-district, MFR sub-district under Article sixty-eight, the maximum FAR is two-point-oh, um, even with the addition of the living space in the carriage house and the other addition, uh, the FAR of this proposed project is one-point-three, substantially below, um, the maximum FAR. The sub-districts of multifamily residential, which by definition...
Because I, I, I think just looking at it, it just looks like it covers so much of the lot...
It doesn't.
That it just makes it so difficult for me to comprehend, you know, it's just making it difficult to comprehend that it's not, that it's in fact only one-point-three, it looks like it should be three or something like that.
No, I mean, the, the, it's a fifty-five hundred square foot lot with an FAR of two-point-oh, so that's eleven thousand allowed, and the FAR square footage is, uh, slightly over seventy-three-hundred, so it's math.
So seventy-three-hundred on the, all, with all the additions and all the existing?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
With respect to the number of units, again, four F, it's a multifamily residential district. The zoning code, the definition of multifamily residential starts by saying four or more dwelling units. With respect to the decks and the privacy issues, the handout we gave you shows the significant changes that were made. The decks were pulled back, privacy screens were added with acoustic panels, the windows on the rear of the existing carriage house that bought Mr. Neeland's property are being removed, so there'll be no windows on the rear of the property. On another wall of the building facing the rear, windows were removed to address the privacy issue. So substantial changes were made to the design by the architect and the proponent, specifically in response to those issues that were raised.
I mean, because it looks like it should just continue to be a normal triple-decker.
Well, and in context, that, that's what it is.
Yeah, but you know.
And the, the, Madam Chair, the addition at the rear of the property is precisely the exact same addition that Mr. Barrett has on his building, so it's basically a mirror image.
I, I, I don't know about his building, if it was done legally, I just don't know, you know, but all I know is what I'm seeing in front of me. Okay, and then the parking, um, so you suggested before that you're providing four spaces?
Yes.
Uh, and that's just for the additional, additional unit?
Yes, it's pre-code structure, so under Article sixty-eight, that's thirty-three, you're only required to provide parking for the additional dwelling unit, which in this case would be one-point-five, but four are being provided.
Okay. And then the issue is maneuverability, but that can be worked out. Okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion.
No, no, no.
I'm going to make a motion, um, it seems that they made a bunch of changes here, um, and it looks like they've taken out a bunch of, if you look at A nine, A ten, and A eleven. I guess my opinion doesn't matter, I'm just going to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling BOA nine-zero-zero-five-eight-eight-seven-ninety-nine East Third Street. This is to raise the exist- the seven, the seven-ninety-nine East Third Street here?
That's me as well.
Oh, it is, okay. This is to raise the existing building erect a new six, six-townhouse-style dwelling and propose garage parking on each dwelling. The violation is Article twenty-seven S, Section five, this is in the South Boston iPod. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight-point-three, location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Pass, Pass, allow seventy-five Harley Street, Boston, Massachusetts. I am the attorney for West Home Orange Russell, Mayor Ratcliffe, who partnered with Jamie and Andrew Tierney to develop this project. I have been requested by my clients based on the composition of the board to see a deferral of this matter at this time.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
Eleven, date of August. No, no, sorry.
September.
Yeah, August, August twenty-seventh.
Eight-twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Eleven-thirty?
Yes.
Correct. Calling the next case, we're calling BOA nine-one-five-four-six-zero, seventy-one to seventy-three Gainesboro Street. This is within existing volume, create a garden-level unit to change the occupancy from a nine-unit building to a ten-unit building. The violation is Article sixty-six, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-six, Section forty-two, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Givenco, Givenco Studio Architects.
I'll come to him, represent him, go on.
What's being proposed?
Well, on this one, no roof deck, no head house. But we are simply doing an interior project here, there's absolutely no exterior work. There's an existing ninety-foot building, mirrored two houses, about courtyard. On the right half, there's a storage area, and we're proposing a single garden-level unit in that storage area.
And how large is that proposed unit?
That proposed unit would be one-thousand-nine-one square feet. It would be a two bedroom.
And your violations were open space and parking?
Open space and parking, no, so.
When was this building built?
This building is a late eighteen hundreds building, it's a traditional brick, um, brick Remsen style, three stories, facing Gainesboro. The lot falls back severely in the rear, so that's why it really, that fourth lowest garden level, it daylighting entirely.
How are the plans, um, Mr. Olick?
Uh, I'm just looking at them now, a quick glance, they look adequate.
In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Ground Trust. So, this case was before you on March twelfth, and the deferral was requested. It was cited for G-Cod incorrectly. There is no digging down that thus would trigger the, the G-Cod requirement here, below the threshold of elevation seven. Uh, the plans were resubmitted to Mark Joseph and Inspeccional Services, and I believe you need a clarification, that in fact, G-Cod was no longer a trigger here.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Chen East Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor, Giselle Guerrero, conducted a community process. Residents came out and were satisfied with the proposal. At this moment, we have no questions or concerns. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of the, of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is anybody here to speak in opposition? How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, they're okay.
Okay. So may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the next case, calling BOA eight-four-five-four-eight-one-sixty-four to sixty-six Salem Street. We have a letter here from council, they are withdrawing, so I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight-eight-three-two-nine-five-two Ludlow Street. This is a new third-floor addition in existing two-story, single-family residence. The new third floor will be five-hundred-and-fourteen square feet. Violation is Article sixty-two, Section twenty-five, alteration of the height profile, loose structure restriction. Article sixty-two, Section eight, insufficient side yard, and Article sixty-two, Section eight, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Johnson, the ten-fourth Road Ranger, speaking this afternoon to Johnny John and Tony Kornik, who are the owners of two other repeat Charles.
So is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
It's a single family, those are the circumstances.
And its owner occupied?
Owner occupied, correct.
And tell us what they're proposing to do.
Proposal is to add a third-floor addition to an existing two-story, single-family. Um, the addition will allow to increase the owners to have a master bedroom and a bathroom. As Mr. Fortune read, uh, read out, the roof structure is automatic anytime there's any change of the roof. FAR is a two-point-oh, we're actually at one-point-seven-five, so we do not have an FAR violation. And insufficient side yard, that's an existing condition. As I stated, the corners are adding five-hundred-and-fourteen square feet addition to a twelve-hundred-eight square foot single-family home. The reason for this addition is that they have two young girls, six and seven years old, they go to the Boston Public Schools, they want to stay in the city.
So, hold on, so there is a roof deck, though?
There is a roof deck.
So tell us about that roof deck.
We don't call this square footage, but it's, uh, just accessible through the hatch, uh, no head house.
So it's through hatch?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I'm just going to look at the dimensions quickly. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, they look okay, um, so still, they're going through.
Reconstruction of roadways and sidewalks i- in this, in this great neighborhood. Uh, for many years, the sidewalks have been in bad need of repair. The plan is to revitalize and, and transform neighborhoods, and that's what we want to do. We want people, when you walk through the neighborhood, that people are proud of their neighborhood when they walk down the street, not broken sidewalks and, and dirty streets. We got to make sure that, that the streets reflect our community and our values in the city of Boston.
The rear yard setback, I don't know if that's been brought up yet, but the code says they need fifteen feet at the rear yard. They don't have fifteen feet at the rear yard, so that's number one violation. Number two, there's a side yard violation, I believe on both sides. It's not clear for the plans, um, exactly, uh, how that is going to be worked out. The side yard that we're attached on, they're saying that the, uh, the wall's going to be attached, but I have a two-story house, and their wall's going to be on the third story, so it's not attached to anything. And as far as the roof deck goes, the roof deck goes right over to the edge of that wall, and there's no setback at all, and it's not attached. So I believe there's a violation there. With regard to the excessive FAR, this is a one-thousand-foot lot that they have. The lot's one-thousand square feet. It already has a two-story addition out the back, and now, um, to request a second, and, and I believe that two-story addition had to have a variance at some point already. So, now this is another third-story addition on the top, it's just clearly excessive, especially considering it's a one-th- one-thousand-foot lot. Additionally, my roof is limited, I'm going to, I have a two-story flat roof house, I already have a wall on my other side, on my right-hand side, on Four Ludlow Street, it's a three-story house, so I have a wall there. Now I'm going to have a second wall going up on the other side, and that's going to limit what I can do with my roof and how I can use my roof with regards to ventilation and skylights and privacy. I'm going to have, I'm going to have two walls on each side of me, limiting my roof. Lastly, I don't think a variance is appropriate at all in this matter. There's no uniqueness to the lot, there's no hardship that's been presented, and there's other options. They have other options. They proposed, uh, two years ago, their first proposal was for an addition out to the rear of their property. They had the butters meeting, everybody came, not one person objected. The city was there, nobody objected to that proposal. So they have other options to increase, you know, their living space. I do have grave concerns about the common wall and, and not only the structural integrity and any hazards that opening the common wall would present to my property, but also to my use of the common wall further down the line. I mean, um, so that's an issue, I have issue, I have, um, density, I think it's very dense. And lastly, um, I don't know, they have to enter my property, they have to get on my property in order to build this, they're going to have to get on my property in order to maintain it, and I believe my property's going to be altered.
So, okay, so that you're a butter?
And which all of, um, director of butter, and I oppose entering, altering, and burdening my property the, the way this is going to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, that during construction, should this be approved, that you will, um, use your best efforts to make sure there's a strong construction management plan in place, because all these buildings in Charleston and other, other old buildings have, um, have maybe some level of integrity issues. So, um, just to put that out there. So your only violations was the roof structure, which is for that deck, your side yard, because it's an existing, existing violation essentially. What's the, what's the, did you say the required FAR is two?
Two, and where at?
And you're at one-point-seven-five?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so given this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please, construction management plan, okay?
Calling the last case for eleven-thirty, calling BOA eight-one-zero-one-five-eight-twenty-five Everett Street. This is to demolish an existing, single-family home in twenty-five Everett and garage in the rear of three Emmett Place, combine the front lot with the rear lot, and create one lot and build a four-story, eight-residential unit building with six-bedroom units and two-one-bedroom units. Violated Article ten, Section one, the proposed parking is twenty-five percent. Article fifty-three, Section eight, the MFR in a three-family sub-district is forbidden. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient rear yard setback, thirty feet is required. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient additional lot area, a thousand square feet unit is required. Article fifty-three, Section nine, excessive FAR, one-point-zero is the max. Article fifty-three, Section nine, number of allowed stories exceeded three stories is the max. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the height is excessive, thirty-five feet is the max. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient usable open space, three hundred square feet unit is required. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-four, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient parking, one-point-five spaces required per unit. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six-point-five, off-street parking maneuverability. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven-point-two, existing building alignment and model alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynch, two-forty-five Summer Street, Boston. We have a petitioner, William's Will Schalbach, who is the architect of this particular project. Madam Chair, we've deferred this several times previously to work very closely with the surrounding neighborhood and take input from the Boston Planning Development Agency with respect to modification of this project. Originally, it was known as an eight-unit project, which has covered substantially more of the lot, that's before the board today. I believe the most updated plans are before the board. This project is going to reduce in a couple of ways. First, rather than eight units, we've reduced it to six units total. The rear portion of the building is pulled back from your property line. We've committed to the neighborhood not to include head houses as part of the roof deck. As this is a four-story building that will require relief on the building code, which is something we'll pursue separately, if we're not successful in thinking that, those roof decks will be eliminated from the proposal. So we are showing roof decks on these plans, however, with the understanding that we do require, require building over leave to have no head house on the upper level. So that's something we're going to pursue separately. With respect to the project, this is a mix of one, two, and two-plus bedrooms. Average, one-bedroom size is about seven-hundred square feet, two-bedrooms roughly just under nine-hundred square feet, and the two pluses, which could be up to three bedrooms, a bedroom sleeping area, range of about sixty-hundred square feet, and a little bit higher. We are proposing keeping a total of eight parking spaces.
Is this project ever before us under, in, in the, in the past? No? Not ever?
I know, it seems that a lot-
Seems like deja vu.
All over again, yes. Might just be, might just be a line. Just, just one more. No, this has never been before, board. There are other projects, Madam Chair, on Everett Street, with some immediate dissection that probably are similar design and similar lot size. Uh, but we did indicate to the neighborhood that we remain committed to the eight parking spaces, even though we are reducing the number to six units. This is within a less than ten-minute walk from our team station, it's located at the beginning portion of Everett Street, so there is accessible public transportation as well. Respect to the relief that's necessary, this is located in three or two-thousand district. Multi-family use would be forbidden, therefore, variance would be necessary. Uh, we do meet the requirements for minimum lot size, lot width, front yard.
So, so let me just back up, since, since you've reduced it from an eight to a six, does your rear yard violation go away?
We've reduced the back of the building as well. This would be eligible for shallow, an exception, so twenty-five feet is the requirement. We're about twenty feet from the rear property line. But I point out that Emmett Place is about a ten-foot private way. So there is additional, an additional ten-feet buffer between the back property lines of the home on Summer Street, as opposed to just abutting their, their property lines. of the home on Sumner Street, uh, as opposed to just abutting their, their property line, so there is a little bit more buffer there. Uh, with respect to the side yard, we do meet the requirements of 5 feet and 11, 5, 14 inches on the right. We are able to provide at least some outdoor space and open space buffer between the two side buildings, more so than the two-and-a-half-foot requirement that provided in the zoning program. As I mentioned, the rear yard would be about 20 feet setback from Emmett Place, and then Emmett Place additional 10 feet, 25 was the requirement. Uh, another concession that we did, worked very closely with the neighbors on, was the reduction of the FAR down to 1.64. Uh, I would say that's relatively consistent, if not, uh, lower than what exists presently in that section of the area at this point, uh, but that was a specific concern that was also a concern. Uh, the height of the building is four stories, 42 feet, roof rafters, three-story, 35 feet is the maximum. I would point out that there are a number of buildings immediately in this vicinity that are in excess of 42 feet, four stories, or will be very soon, so it's consistent with the direction of this particular neighborhood. Our open space is about 207 square feet per unit, uh, just below 300 square feet that's required. A variance for that is being requested. And with respect to parking, uh, the nine parking spaces required, we're proposing eight, uh, which is more than one per unit. This is intended for homeownership, so every unit is assigned its one parking space in connection with the sale of that unit. Um, one of the other features that we did have a lengthy discussion with the neighborhood with was the ability of us to provide the parking without having a curb cut to the street. Emmett Place, which we do have rights to access, is access to an adjacent private way, so all of the parking would be able to access the rear portion of Emmett Place.
And does it look like all parking spots basically back into Emmett?
They would back out into Emmett, and again, it's a limited private way, it's not open for traffic, so it's only those along that portion of Everett Street, a limited number of homes that have access to Emmett Place.
Okay. And the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, the drawings are adequate. I'm just curious, uh, it seems like sort of a contemporary design in a fairly critical neighborhood. Was that a concern of the--
Uh, actually, the design was pretty well received. There was a Art of the Lady-sized project going up right across the street, that we took a lot of the elements from. In fact, I believe it was the same architect that designed the project across the street.
No, it looks, it looks pretty nice. I just, I just wondered whether there was pushback on that.
Yeah, I mean, we get that typical, it doesn't look like it belonged to these masses and, um, response. I don't, to this day, I don't know how to answer that question, but we feel that the elements are there.
You don't, who does?
I don't.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go in direct record in support. Uh, the developer addressed many of the concerns expressed during the community process, including, uh, the reduction of number of units from eight to six. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDAs designer view.
And I, and I do wanna emphasize in there somewhere, Mark, um, about the understanding with the community that, that there will be no head house to that, um, to that roof deck, and if it's not possible to, to access that roof deck without a head house, the roof deck will be eliminated. Okay, so we should have that in the decision somewhere.
Sorry, no head house.
Okay? And so that was the motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go right to the recommendations, and then we'll go back to the other pending issues. Uh, so this was the subcommittee, um, zoning advisory subcommittee, on Thursday, June 20th. Uh, we just need to put these into the record. So, the first case, BOA 931-274-220, Chelsea Street, was deferred to August 22nd on the subcommittee. Case BOA 945-581-14, Austin Street, was reframed roof, had two dormers, it was approved. Case BOA 926-131, 118 Elm Street, was a third-floor addition along with a second-floor layout changes, was approved. Case BOA 942-137, Three Lawnood Place, was a renovate, existing basement to a new kitchen, it was approved. BOA 931-512-22, Oak Street, was building addition renovation, it was approved. BOA 937-722, 49 Ward Street, will construct a new side-deck addition, it was approved. BOA 919-099-145, Theodore Park Road, it was constructed second-floor addition, existing first-floor footprint, it was approved. BOA 942-597, 10 Mariposa Street, was a change of ride from a single-family to a two-family, it was approved with BPDA. BOA 939-818-49, Metropolitan Avenue, was a rear and front addition, new dormers, interior renovation, new garage, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 922-327-79 to 81, Spring Park Avenue, was in solid skylight, the finished attic space, uh, 404 square feet, it was approved. BOA 922-327-305, Corey Street, was interior renovation, it's an existing two-family dwelling, was approved. Case BOA 932-813-7, Maple Lane, was a raised roof, house that added extra, extra living space, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 941-665-31, Maxfield Street, it was a mudroom and rear deck, it was approved. Case BOA 932-424-160, Russet Road, it was removed, existing, replaced a new deck of same size, two foot 16 by 10, a 16 by eight in the lower part, it was approved. Case BOA 947-918, 56 Presentation Road, was a curb cut for two vehicles, it was approved. On the rediscussion, case BOA 892-543-616 to 618, East 8th Street, was to move the existing roof hatch, install a new head house, it was approved. That concludes the subcommittee. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Um, mo--
Motion.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna concur with the recommendation.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, we two, two other things to discussion on the open meeting law complaint. Case BOA 823-636-141 to 145, Norfolk Street.
Norfolk Street, um, where is Norfolk Street? Um, I think, um, didn't they withdraw it?
No, it was approved.
Oh, Norfolk Street, oh, was, what, when was it approved?
The hearing was on October 16th, 2018.
Okay, oh, I see, I see. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was another place. I get it, okay, so, um--
Question of the motion. Go ahead.
Uh, page six.
Yeah?
There were, were they called in the record?
Yes. Okay, so Kevin, is that something you wanted to say about the open meeting law?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Kevin O'Connor, Assistant Corporation Counsel, City of Boston, and Executive Secretary to the Board of Appeal. In reference to the noticed open meeting law complaint, just summarize the complaint and the findings. The open meeting law complaint was received relative to Board of Appeal 823-636 over 141 to 145 Norfolk Street, which as I stated, was heard on October 16th, 2018. Complaint was filed with the board on November 15th, 2018, and on June 10th, 2019, the Attorney General's Office, Division of Open Government, issued its findings. The complaint alleged that the board violated the open meeting law in three ways, that the board discussed a matter that was not listed on the hearing notice, that the board restricted an individual's right to record the meeting, and that the meeting was not accessible due to the inability to hear. The Attorney General's Office found that with respect to violations alleged one and three, that there was no violation by the board. However, it did find that the second violation, alleging that an individual was prevented from recording the meeting, that there was a violation of the open meeting law in that Attorney General's findings note that the open meeting law states that after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of a chair as to the number, placement, operation of the equipment used so as not, not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. The board, in its written response to the complaint, did contend that this individual did the recording at that hearing, did not notify the chair, and that it was therefore being disruptive to the hearing. However, the Attorney General's Office did find, after review of the video recording, that the acting chair is directive to the individual to stop recording because the meeting was being livestreamed, uh, for that reason did, did not constitute a reasonable restriction of the individual's right to record. In conclusion, um, with respect to the violation that was found, the Attorney General, Attorney General's Office orders the board, and the board's immediate compliance with the open meeting law's requirements and cautions that any similar future violations of the law could be considered evidence of intent to violate the law, and the Attorney General's Office does now consider this complaint closed. So, I think just with respect to, uh, going forward, I know it's always the intent of the board to comply with the, the open meeting laws and the other, uh, various laws that are, uh, focus of these hearings. Um, I just, I think the, with respect to, uh, individuals recording the proceedings, I think the Attorney General is now clear that, um, even if the person has not notified the chair, um, that the best practice is to err on the side of caution and to allow such recording to take place, uh, subject to reasonable requirements. If that person is standing and blocking the view of others, then it's okay to ask them to move to the side to record so as not to disrupt or interfere with anybody else's ability, uh, to observe the hearing. Um, and the decision also makes clear that, the fact that the hearing is being livestreamed and recorded also does not preclude an individual's right, uh, to record the hearing if they so wish.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to accept the findings.
We don't, I don't think we need a motion, this is information--
That's not necessary, Mr. Ehrlich.
Just for information purposes.
It's just to, um, just in--
Just to put everything on the record.
Just to be open and to acknowledge the findings of the Attorney General's Office, but we, we do not, based upon their findings and conclusion, uh, we do not have to formally respond to them.
Thank you. Meeting is now adjourned.